Hey Britt.
Hi Mayor.
How's it looking out there?
Uh, we've got quite a few people on the call.
Oh, that's exciting.
Yeah. Two, four, six, seven. We do have some presenters, so it's possible some of the numbers are from that.
Okay.
Although they have the link, so they should be getting on as well.
All right, what do you say, Britt? 4:30?
It looks like 4:30 to me, Mayor.
All righty. Well, that noted that it is 4:30. It is still February 2nd, 2021. We are Carmel by the C City Council. I'd like to call to order the meeting. Britt, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barron?
Here.
Berlito?
Here.
Tice?
Here.
Mayor Protam Richards?
Here.
Mayor Potter?
Here.
Yeah, we have a quorum.
Excellent. So first item of business today is extraordinary business. We do have an extraordinary introduction. Chip, would you be planning on introducing Brandon to the world?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my real pleasure. And actually, Brandon just wrote me and he said he's going to be getting on a couple of minutes late. A lot of you have met him. A lot of the public have met him in the last two weeks. He joined us two weeks ago today. It's my real pleasure to welcome Brandon Swanson to our team. He comes as a highly recommended, highly decorated land use professional who also has a background in hospitality. We got him from Monterey County. He's a proud resident of Pacific Grove. His little girl goes to school with my little girl. That's not why I hired him. But he's already fit in so well, Mr. Mayor. He's been returning calls and meeting people on walks, obviously socially distanced with masks. And he's going to be a real attribute, a real great fit to our village. So I'm just very, very enthused to have him here. Thank you to Mary for writing a wonderful piece on him in last week's Friday, a pine cone, rather. And so please, please reach out to Brandon, say hello. We'll be walking the streets and introducing him for the next several weeks. Also, I just want to again very publicly acknowledge the fine work that Marnie Waffle did for the last year under extremely difficult circumstances under COVID. And Marnie will continue to be with us as a principal planner. Again, she's been a wonderful asset to the village and she'll continue to contribute. And she and Brandon are getting along thick as thieves already. So that's what I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you and welcome, Mr. Swanson.
Thank you, Chip. Marnie, I want to thank you personally for really stepping forward at a time when there were no defined rules of play and stepping onto the battlefield and doing the best you could to get people calmed down and get them educated as what the process was, as the process was developing. It really was, especially with the park lots, obviously. There was no real playbook out there, but you were instrumental in getting it moving forward. I know the community appreciates your efforts. I certainly do. I know council does. Brandon, it's good to have you back working with me again. Brandon was one of the few people over the county actually understood what public service was about. So I'm really glad to have him here. Brandon, I will give you my usual caveat. Anybody who joins the team here, do not screw up. That was given to me by Dan Albert when I joined council back then. But Brandon, we're really glad to have you here. I personally am delighted to have you at my side again. So thank you for joining the team. That noted, unless there's any other comments, we do have two presentations. Are there any other comments? I don't see any. Brandon, you want to say a word?
No, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize for being a couple of minutes late, though.
As long as you're out returning a phone call, it's all that matters to me.
Yes, sir. I was taking care of some last minute fires for the day.
Those won't be the last, but they will be exciting. Well, good to have you here.
Thank you.
All right, why don't we move on then to our first presentation or information item, which is a food waste reduction and organic recycling regulations, which are quite extensive. Bobby, you handling this?
Yeah, I'll kick this off. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rob Hilton with the firm HF&amp;H is on the call and he'll be making the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. Let me share my presentation here. And let's see. Can folks see the presentation?
I can.
Oh, it's advancing more quickly than I would like. Let me see if I can get control of that and I'll be right back. All right. So we're here today to talk to you about some changes that are coming to your recycling and solid waste program as a result of some state laws that were adopted a few years back, back in 2016. The state, as part of the overall climate package, adopted what they called the Short-lived Climate Pollutants Reduction Act, SB 1383. And it seeks to reduce the impact of super pollutants on the climate. And in particular, the regulations look at the solid waste industry and they look at the organic waste that we're putting in landfills. And when we put organic waste in landfills, it generates methane, which we'll talk about in just a minute. But that's important because a lot of what we put into landfills is organic in nature, as this pie chart illustrates. About 27 million tons of organic waste in 2017, and the amount that we're disposing of is going up. So that is a critical issue in the state from a climate perspective. It's also a critical issue in the state from a food insecurity perspective. About one in eight Californians go hungry or are food insecure at some point. One in five California children are food insecure at some point. And meanwhile, we're throwing about 6 million tons of food away every year. So clearly, this is an issue that we can and probably should solve. So as I mentioned, there are a number of different potent climate gases. Methane is one of them, and methane is emitted because of putting organic material into landfills. And while your landfill has a really good landfill gas recovery system in place, you have one of the the first landfill gas recovery systems in California and one of the first in the country. You've been a responsible leader around that. Even those systems that you have in place are not perfectly efficient. They do allow some emissions of methane prior to the placement of those systems. So the state has adopted these minimum program standards for local jurisdictions like your city to implement to mitigate these impacts. So we'll get into some specifics in a bit, but I wanted to give you the timeline first. So SB 1383 was adopted in September of 2016, and they've been working on the regulations. It took them more than four years to draft, do stakeholdering, and finalize those regulations. They were adopted at the end of 2020, and they take effect January 1 of '22. So they've given us about a year, about 14 months, to implement all of these regulations. All of the new program requirements take effect January of 2022. And by January of 2024, local governments will be required to take enforcement action related to these program requirements. That's all with a goal of reducing how much organics we're putting into landfills by 75% by 2025 and reducing the amount of edible food that we're disposing of and instead putting that into hungry folks' hands. 20% recovery of that edible food by 2025. So what do you need to know as a local agency? In 2022, you will be required to provide organics collection services to all residents and businesses. In Carmel, that means expanding the organics collection service that you all have at your homes now. You currently have a green container that you can put your yard trimmings into. We'll be adding food scraps and food soiled paper to that program in order to meet that requirement. In addition, any multifamily properties in Carmel that don't already have green container service will need to add it. And any businesses that don't have food collection service yet will need to add it. Carmel's done a great job, by the way, of expanding the participation in the food recycling program. And that will really assist you guys in moving into that implementation successfully. You have a smaller lift than other agencies do. You'll also have to establish edible food recovery programs, working with social services agencies and feeding organizations throughout the county. You'll need to set up programs for large food generators at first and then smaller ones by 2024 to donate their edible food to a feeding organization of some sort. And the requirements of the law are that the restaurants or the food service establishments that are required to participate need to have a contract with those entities. The city will be required to educate everybody about these new rules. And I'll talk about in a little bit. The city will be required to procure a specified quota of recovered organic waste products, compost, mulch, energy, or fuel. And then lastly, you're required to participate in capacity planning. You need to make sure that you have enough capacity to handle all of the material that will be generated by this. Then, as I mentioned, all these programs will go into place in 2022. You'll have about two years to work with the community, to educate the community about the rules. And then in 2024, the law requires local agencies to take enforcement actions against any non-compliant entities. And that enforcement process is a progressive one, but it is a real requirement and something that Cal Recycle and all local agencies are going to try and avoid as much as possible by getting ahead with education. The law requires some minimum program standards. It's sort of like the stormwater trash amendments that your agency has been working with over the last few years. So you have to pick a number of programs that you will implement in order to affect these mitigations. And the state's looking for your implementation of those programs, not some achievement of a standard. So you're given an option about the collection programs that you can implement for your community. The best choice is a three承容器源分离的系统. It's what you already have. It's what your community is familiar with and will require relatively little change. So the good news for you guys is you're already most of the way there to the most expensive and most challenging part of the requirements. You'll also need to work to identify these food recovery system participants. And again, these are existing systems, well-maintained systems, it seems, in Monterey County. And it's really about plugging into those and really supporting those feeding networks. And that's work that will be done at a regional level. There's educational requirements, and both Green Waste Recovery as your franchise hauler and the Monterey Regional Waste Management District as your facility operator do a great job with community education and outreach. And the minimum standards of the law are well below what you already do in your communities. So we have every expectation that you'll meet these education requirements. But this education will be really important as you're rolling out these new programs. And I know both Green Waste and the district have ideas about how to make that successful. One of the requirements of the law that I mentioned is that each jurisdiction in the state will be given a quota of recovered organic waste products that that agency needs to procure and use. That can come in the form of compost, mulch, renewable natural gas generated from organics, or electricity generated from organics. You do have some options around those things out at the Monterey Regional Waste Management District because there is a compost facility and a mulch generation activity going on out there. And with Monterey One Water, there may be some opportunities for the electricity generation. It's possible that this won't be a huge thing for Carmel. However, the procurement requirement is quite sizable, and it will probably exceed what you could place in your community in terms of compost or mulch. So really relying on that partnership with the district is going to be important. The other thing that the law requires is that local jurisdictions track the amount of recycled content paper products, not just paper, but any paper product that you're using. You aren't required to use recycled content paper because that would generate a unfunded mandate claim. But you are required to track whether you are using that recycled content paper or not. And if the recycled content paper is cheaper than virgin paper, you're required to use it. So what will be coming to your jurisdiction in terms of inspection and enforcement? The Monterey Regional Waste Management District is getting a group together to prepare some model ordinance language, and that'll be brought to you to affect all of those policy requirements that exist under SB 1383 and to conform to those. You'll need to set up with Green Waste Recovery and/or the Monterey Regional Waste Management District a compliance monitoring program where you go around and you look at people's participation in the programs and the quality of that participation and do education. And again, in anticipation of that 2024 fine-based, penalty-based enforcement process, making sure that you do good education outreach in those first two years. Good news is, unlike most jurisdictions around the state, you have local composting and digestion infrastructure in your community. And this is one of the largest challenges that most communities throughout the state are facing. So the fact that you're a member of the Monterey Regional Waste Management District means that you're already a long way towards these requirements for the hardest and most expensive pieces of them. Cal Recycle will be monitoring this, and there are significant penalties to local agencies, up to $10,000 per day for failure to comply with all of these requirements. Cal Recycle will also be conducting oversight over state agencies and special districts and local education institutions to make sure that they're doing their part of this. Cal Recycle's enforcement process includes some lead times, so there's a notice of violation and corrective action plans. So you don't get into those fines immediately, but I can tell you from experience with other clients that have been on these, it's unpleasant, it's expensive, it's time consuming just to be in that compliance process. So your best option is to get ahead of that. And the good news is that that work is already underway. Throughout the county, both the Monterey Regional Waste Management District and over on the other side of the county, the Salinas Valley Recycles Agency are working ahead of this issue. On the peninsula side, a tax subcommittee has been established for each of several different areas of compliance to work through the nuts and bolts details of those and really understand how those things are going to work in the local community with your local haulers. They've also reached out to the Food Bank and other feeding organizations to understand how that edible food piece will work. And the larger group is really working on how community-wide education and monitoring and some of these processes and systems that are required will work. And the best way to do that to get messaging and harmony across the county. So coming to you later this year will be an amendment to your franchise agreement, which may include some updated rates. And that's to affect all of the new programs and monitoring and reporting that's required under the new law. You'll be required to adopt certain ordinances. Those are being developed as model ordinances at the MRWMD. And an agency-specific version of that will be brought to you for adoption. And then you'll need to work with Green Waste Recovery about how the outreach system and how the monitoring system will work locally in Carmel. And Carmel is very unique for all the wonderful reasons you all know. But one of them is you have backyard service for trash collection. And so that process of monitoring customers' participation in the program will be a little different for you than it is for other communities that set their containers out at the curb. So that's a high-level overview of about 200 pages of regulatory requirements. And if you want more information about SB 1383 and the impact on the solid waste industry, there's a couple of links here, one listserv and a website from Cal Recycle. And then my contact information if there's any questions directly for me.
So Rob, thank you for the presentation. This is a presentation only, but if councilmembers had questions, I do have one, Rob. I don't quite understand the edible food and railroad food recovery program that we'd be developing. There's nothing in my garbage that's edible in my mind. So is that geared more towards restaurants and supermarkets and not personal garbage? I mean, 20% of my garbage is not even close to being edible, let alone anything else that's in there.
Absolutely, yeah. This is really targeted at packing houses, food distributors, large volume food service entities in the first tranche, the tier one folks that will be included in 2022. They're very, very large entities. So, you know, general and supermarkets, as you described, so generally pallet loads of donateable food.
Good. Is the staff reports a rescue for people to eat at least 20% of currently decomposed surplus food by 2025? That seemed a little odd to me. I appreciate the clarification.
Yeah.
Bobby and then Carrie.
Yeah, hi, Rob. Thank you for the presentation. You mentioned there's going to be possibly new rates. What does that look like?
We're not sure yet. We have not sat down with Green Waste to receive their proposal. The good news for your agency is you had all of the big expensive programs already built into your existing contracts. So you already have a food scraps program for businesses. We had provisions in there to be able to add food scraps to the residential recycling program at no charge. So really, I think any additional costs to green waste are around the monitoring education and sort of the data tracking, the additional record-keeping and reporting that's required. So we expect this to be a fairly small issue in terms of compensation to them. The Monterey Regional Waste Management District may have more obligations that they need to meet because their operating facilities and the Title 14 requirements that they operate under have changed. So there may be some tip fee adjustments out at the district in addition to the things that happen with your collection contract.
Okay, because we just, it seems like we just got hit pretty hard with an increase. And in the contract that's, I don't know how old, I think it's about an eight-year-old contract now, they had an allowance for three different times that there would be rate increases. Is this going to count as one of those?
It depends on the magnitude of what we're looking at, whether you would want to utilize that mechanism or if you just want to piggyback off of the prior one. If it's a significant adjustment, I think you would want to use that mechanism. If it's a smaller one, as I am anticipating, we may do it more administratively without going through that huge process.
Thank you. Carrie, did you want to say something? And then Carrie and then Karen.
So thank you, Rob. It's good to get the word out. So I have a question for Chip. Does this mean that Anyas is going to be like really super busy? Yeah.
Yeah, Anyas is already really super busy, yeah. So yeah, it's the education. In Mr. Hilton's presentation, he talked about compliance or enforcement. So that, you know, when you go to see a restaurateur and they're trying to serve people, we wouldn't do it during service, obviously, hours. But it's going to be very time-consuming for us to do the education and outreach and enforcement.
And Bobby, you're right. That's one reason why our garbage bills are going up is because of all this compliance issue. And you said unfunded mandates, Rob. The state passed all this and did not give anybody any money for it. So that's why we're having to deal with it. So thank you, Rob.
Karen?
Yes, I'm wondering, this will probably impact special events, too, when we have big special events in town or at the AT&amp;T, the Big Sur Marathon and so on, where we have leftover food stuff. Is that correct?
So. Large events and venues will be included in the edible food recovery, but not until 2024. The challenges associated with recovering, you know, chafing trays and extra sandwiches and things like that are much greater than, you know, pallet loads of stuff from a grocery store.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by councilmembers? All right, seeing none. Rob, thank you for the presentation. You've made your contact information available to the public. I'd encourage them to reach out with you as the garbage police start hitting our way. So thank you, Rob. Appreciate it. All right, Bob, I think the floor is next to yours with the Public Works Director's reviewing of the city's storm drain master plan.
That would be right. I'm Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Give me a second to share my screen. Can everyone see that?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Back in September 2019, the city council awarded a professional services contract to Shaft and Wheeler Consulting Engineers to prepare our storm drain master plan. The cost was $174,000. It was completed slightly under budget and on time last fall. So what is a storm drain master plan? This is a document that guides the planning, design, construction, operation, and maintenance of all of our storm drainage infrastructure. The master plan also developed models of the existing storm drains so that we could assess the physical condition of the system, identify bottlenecks, and prioritize required improvements. On the left-hand side, these are the concerns we had before we had a storm drain master plan. And on the right-hand side, it was what are the impacts from those concerns? Well, the first concern I had was that we didn't have a master plan in the first hundred years of the existence of the city of Carmel. So how does that relate to anything? Well, do we have a hodgepodge system development? Which the answer is somewhat yes. Whack-a-mole flooding is when you repair drainage or flooding in one location, only to find the same water ends up downhill somewhere else. It causes a problem there. Another concern was the capacity of our system was unknown. So how can we properly prepare for emergency response? I think we were well-prepared last week for the storm, but how do we prepare for an even larger storm event? We did not know the physical condition of our system, our below-ground system, because it was never televised, or if it was, it's been many, many years ago. So we didn't know if we had failures or sinkholes or blockages, and it affects, it could affect water quality. We do know that we have a lack of easements for drainage maintenance. So public water that lands in the street in some locations cross over private properties and then back into the public right away. So that's kind of very unique for our city. We have a stream stability study at Mission Trails Nature Preserve, and we have significant erosion and a far less sensitive habitat that all ties into the storm drain system. We did not know the cost of repairs, or how do we prepare budgets for the capital improvement projects to maintain our storm drain system until we had this document. And also, of course, we're looking at climate change impacts. This is a map of our existing drainage system. Ignore the orange stripes, but if you look at the blue lines, that represents below-ground pipe. You can see in this area, it's pretty grid-like. However, look at the area here in the northeast part of town. Looks like very unusual shapes of storm drains. And also here on Mission, south of Ocean, there's a jog of our main line that goes into Mission Trails Park. So we have a couple of interesting things to look at. We also have three bodies of water that receives our rainwater. Carmel Bay is certainly the most. We also discharge into the Carmel River, and a little bit from the slope falls into the Pescadero Canyon. We also knew that we have drainage concerns at certain places. Every rainstorm's a little different, but these seem to be the locations where we consistently have problems, those red dots. Part of the master plan was to do a physical Part of the master plan was to do a physical condition assessment. And in tabular form, first on the pipes and box culverts, we do have 271 pipe segments. I don't think anyone knew that before this survey was completed. We have 6.5 miles of underground storm drain. With that, overall, the system was better than we thought. So that's the good news. But we do have some cracked pipes. We have broken liners. We have some joints that are offset. We have some sags. We have 264 manholes and catch basins. A lot of them get filled with sediment that doesn't quickly discharge. We also have some deep manholes, which are now confined spaces and we cannot go in it to maintain those. We have some open channels where we have a lot of vegetation and erosion problems. We also have on our southeast side of town, we have culverts under intersection crossings, which those culverts are fine, but parking into a drainage ditch and getting out of the car into a drainage channel is a safety issue. Drainage outlets, we have 22 outlets total, 20 are into the bay. And we've mentioned the others that go into the Carmel River. And we have four underfired hydrodynamic trash separator units. These are very expensive. Those were, the first one to replace or to increase the size is in our five-year capital improvement plan. But that's going to be a beast of a project when we get to it. We also have to work with COD to clean out those trash separator units. This is a map that shows in red where the condition problems are at. Okay, so there's a lot more detail behind this information in the storm drain master plan itself. Here's some photos. On the left side, we see a pipe. If we go back to our grading system, like our school grades, this pipe is not brand new, so it's not an A. You can see cracks are forming, but it's still pretty cylindrical. It looks like water is flowing through here. So this pipe condition is probably a B. We should be monitoring it every few years, make sure that these cracks are not increasing and having a potential collapse. On the right, that's too late. What you're looking at here in this left corner, which we didn't know what it was, it turns out it's a tire. So this tire is on top of a collapsed piece of pipe in our system. On the left, we have a pipe that's sadged. So water, water doesn't go uphill by itself. So this water just sits in this pipe indefinitely. It reduces the capacity of our pipe. It's also a water quality problem and it could, it could collect mosquitoes and things like that. But I haven't heard of any such complaints. On the right hand side, this is a typical, not a typical catch basin. This is a catch basin that has a whole lot of trash in it. But over the course of the year, until these are cleaned out, we do get trash collected in our storm drains and our catch basins. Here are some pipe joint problems on the left. I believe this is a manhole and a pipe, and we can't really tell what it is because it's so messed up. On the right hand side, you see one pipe here and it was straight on circle. And you see this outer ring of the connecting pipe, it's like at an angle. It's skewed to the next pipe. That's not a good, that's not a good sign. And that's probably going to cause a backup of water into our system. Okay, so in the storm drain master plan, I also fitted a hydrology model, which is a surface runoff. And then we'll get to hydraulic model. I know this is kind of technical and tedious, but we'll look at some big picture issues. A 10-year storm today would be three inches in 24 hours. That same three inches in the year 2045 due to climate change will be almost three and a half inches. A 50-year storm today would be over four inches of rain in 24 hours. And in 2045, that would increase to five inches. Last week, in our unofficial gauge back here in Public Works, we had 5.2 inches fell last week. But it wasn't all in one day. It was over essentially three days. But to, so anyway, back to developing the model. It looks at topography. It looks at the land use. It looks at soil classifications, the lag time, and it uses our GIS data that we had. And on the right, you can see one of our outfalls. That was pretty active last week. This is kind of a drainage pattern of our hydrology. You can see the water in these, this diagrammatic. Arrow A has, collects the water from this area in the northeast. It discharges into three different sources. One, it goes into Fourth Avenue along here, which is B. It goes down into Ocean Avenue, which is C. And it goes into this series of pipes here, which is D. The creek that flows through Mission Trails is E. It collects water from outside of our city limits. It's in the county, but it's still water that we get. So G and E goes out to, discharges in the Carmel River at F. C, H, and I all go straight to the west and discharge into the ocean. And there's just a little bit of water that flows into Pescadero Canyon from our northern edge, southwestern edge. Hydraulic models are even more fun. It depends on the pipe sizes, the types of pipe, pipe slopes, inverts, what box culverts we're using, open channels. We don't have any pump stations fortunately in our system. It's all a gravity system. But the hydraulic model did point out some areas where we have problems. So this is, these are 19 projects to accommodate a 10-year storm. So they identified high priority projects in red, moderate in yellow, and then green is low priority projects. Of all of these projects, I viewed it as Project A would be to replace the line on Huniporo and bypass the bypass to go on Huniporo. So I think this is one area that would really make a huge difference in our system if we were to be able to address that. Project B is maybe not as a high priority, but I think it's critical to get our, to upsize our box culverts underneath Rio Road and under our park to discharge to the river. So this could be a bottleneck, and this certainly has been a bottleneck. All these other areas are warranted, but I don't think they're as urgent as these bigger two. So the consultant prepared a list of all the projects. And if we were, if money was no object and we had $9.9 million, we could get all, everything to work perfectly at a 10-year storm event. So we would have, we would have essentially no problems on a 10-year storm event where we could pass three inches of water. The top two priority projects is A, which would be the Mission and Huniporo bypass. That's 1.6 million. And B is the Rio Road, which would be about 2.4 million. So for $4 million of the nine, that would really give us the biggest bang for our dollars. Climate change. In a 10-year storm, what we had last week was essentially a 10-year storm or very close to it, but it was stretched out over just a couple of more days. With the investment of the dollars to make our repairs, and by 2045, when the storm intensity increases 16%, if we have 3.5 inches of rain within 24 hours, we're going to find flooding in these areas. The Carmel River will swell up again like it did. Hopefully that is as large because, well, it depends on what the clouds and the rain are. But this, this will be swollen. The river through Mission Trails Park would be swollen. And because of all this hodgepodge of drainage problems here, and even if we repair the broken pipes, we still have a problem here like Huniporo and Ocean and not allowing enough flow to go down along oceans to exit into the ocean. So we do have a problem here and here in our city. In a 50-year storm event in the year 2045, even with improvements, this would be five inches of rain over 24 hours. We can see that the Carmel, again, this is theory, but you can see the Carmel River would be swollen up to Santa Lucia, which it did last week. The Mission Trails Nature Preserve stream would be quite enlarged. This area here, same location, but just the quantity of water would be more. What's good about many of our streets is that they're very steep. So that water will obviously flow downhill. But when it gets bottlenecked into our Ocean Avenue system, it's going to just back up. And then we also have some problems down in here, but. Well, I guess that's it for that one. So here are the conclusions. The Storm Drain Master Plan eliminates the fear of the unknown. If council recalls my infrastructure report cards of the last couple of years, I always placed storm drainage as the worst case scenario within our infrastructure system. Now we don't have the fear of the unknown. We know, we know what the problems are. Second bullet, Carmel storm drains were designed piecemeal over time, which is very common with other cities as well. However, what's uncommon is that our system was designed for only 10-year storm events. Most agencies have designed their storm system for 20-year events. So historically, we saved money over the many years by building a 10-year capacity system. But we're going to have problems when we have larger storm events in the future. Without repairs, a 10-year storm today would cause minor flooding in a few areas. And that was written even before we had the storms last week. About $10 million would be needed to repair all the system problems and handle the storm drains very smoothly. But again, $4 million of the $9 million would really fix the two biggest concerns. A 50-year storm in the year 2045 would cause moderate to significant flooding and damage, especially in the downtown and northeast areas and through Mission Trail Nature Preserve. Fortunately, the Mission Trail is not occupied with homes, but the northeast and downtown areas was a bigger concern relative to structures. And the Storm Drain Master Plan is available on the city website on the Public Works main page. And that completes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bob. Are there any council member questions? Bobby, you got your hand up first.
Yeah, Bob, on the Rio Road, is there any help that we could get from the county with that one?
Not really. The good news is that the rain last week cleared out the two box culverts we have. Okay, because one was kind of clogged with sediment. Now we have two box culverts. We really need three. We don't have enough capacity. So it was just be a matter of funding to build another box culvert under Rio Road.
To, to help with that capacity, then could we put that on a maintenance routine and clear them out ourselves and not rely on Mother Nature?
We don't have the capability of clearing them out ourselves. COD does, and we can have COD wash out our system. But again, under, the issue with Rio Road is that we don't have enough capacity. So even if the two box culverts we have today are cleaned out, there's more water that just can't fit through only two of those box culverts. We need another one.
So Bob, if I could just add on to Bobby's question. So if you take some of the unincorporated areas, you got to realize that they're part of our watershed. So let's take Carmel Woods, for example. They're at the top of the hill. They create a lot of runoff. The water comes down into our system, and yet we're the ones who are responsible for making sure that that water gets through our community and then into the ocean. I mean, is there any possible co-planning or cooperation there on projects that might make a difference? I know it's kind of hard to get them to understand that there is a liability issue. But I'd be kind of interested in seeing what the, you know, possible nexus arguments there are out there. And I don't expect a direct answer, but maybe you could nod your head up and down and say, yeah, Dave, I'll look at it.
I'll nod my head, yes.
All right, Carrie.
Thanks, Bob. This is a perfect example of what the Climate Change Committee has been looking at. Bob was nice enough to give that presentation to us last month, I believe. And it's exactly what we're trying to address in terms of looking forward, looking at what the city needs to do if we have higher, bigger storms, more runoff, and looking at what capital projects that we need to take a look at to try to plan for. So this really goes in great with what we're doing with the Climate Change Committee.
Any other questions or comments? Jeff?
Yeah, I would just echo what Carrie said, Bob. Thank you for all the, for all the work, all the management work that you did over this. It's, it's, it's just, to me, the engineer is just fascinating to look at it. So thanks.
Thank you.
So Bob, I would, I would also comment that it's kind of like your road assessment where you prioritize and go in and do road repairs based on the deteriorated infrastructure. Prioritize and then address before we go even further into deterioration. You know, I can't remember is the, in the world of the ASBS areas, areas of special biological significance, is Carmel Bay, isn't Carmel Bay one of those areas?
It certainly is.
And so if you look at NPS's non-point pollution, it's where you can't point to the source, but you know it's coming off of the runoff of our area. What's our mandate to address the ASBS issues?
I would defer that to Anyas because that's what she does.
Excellent.
We have, so the ASBS requirements are incorporated in our stormwater permit with the state. And so we actually have a lot of requirements that are specific to Carmel related to ASB. Things like, you know, weekly construction inspections in the winter. There's, there's a lot of inspection work that we do associated with that and monitoring.
I would think that, I would think that this report would be very helpful in recognizing that we are prioritized in the areas of major concern that would most address that issue. So I think that the fact that we spent the money on this study is very helpful as far as getting people to know that we are taking the pollution issues in the bay very seriously.
Yeah, it's, it's very helpful. And there's actually a couple of projects included in the, in the plan for, that are water quality related projects that would help manage, but also on water quality in the bay.
Excellent. Any other questions? All right, Bob, thank you very much. Appreciate the study. It'll be very helpful when we actually have some money to put in a capital improvement program.
Thank you.
All right, why don't we move on then to public's appearance? It's an opportunity for any member of the public to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Three minute limitation on that testimony. If you'd state your name for the record, I would appreciate it. Please don't hesitate to speak up. Britt, you're in charge of the segue to the mic.
Parker Logan.
Parker.
All right, Parker, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. It wasn't just the advice of my mother to be nice tonight. In fact, it's been well-voiced sentiment from a lot of people, and some of you are on this call. It's very possible I haven't shown enough appreciation for those who wield the authority to make positive changes in policy that could help my unique business. So first of all, I'd like to give some thanks. So thank you, Councilman Barron, for the advice, and I quote, "Don't throw good money after bad," as I was applying for an encroachment permit. Oh, and a special thank you to Chip, who politely questioned the validity of my business to achieve profitability and suggested my bar was merely a hobby and I should consider doing something else. If I'd taken their advice, I wouldn't have been told just yesterday by Chip that he would do nothing within his power to help me in any way, that my business was not important to him. For those who don't remember, it took over four months to acquire my encroachment permit, while most others received one within 48 hours, and public records support this. Now, that may not be crystal clear, but if you were to view this through, say, man, anti-fogging polished plexiglass face shield, it might look like Carmel's oldest and historically significant drinking establishment is underappreciated. But that's not true, and it couldn't be further from it. Sadie's is very unique, as am I. Everyone on this call is unique, but maybe not as unique as Carmel by the Sea. Surely we can all agree on this. But Sadie's is one person's cheese shop and another's cottage of sweets. It's one person's Little Swiss, yet another's Forest Theater. Carmel is a visitor's fantasy fairy tale village, and all the unique small businesses provide the fairy dust, the fond memories and experiences that keep people coming back for more. But the decision to pit encroachment permit holders against each other by providing universal operating hours is damaging. I don't want to compete with spinach gnocchi or Craig-style pancakes, and I shouldn't have to. Because the shelter in place order has been lifted, the 10:00 PM curfew has been abolished, hotels are open for tourism, pancakes are flipping, shops are bustling, cheese is being sampled again, wine glasses are clinking, there are musicians in the streets and a line out the door at the Cottage of Sweets. And I just lie and wait, just mere steps away from all of it. I lie and wait for the long lines to thin and dining chairs to be tucked in. I lie and wait for the clock to strike 10, because that's when the memories in Sadie's begin. All businesses should have the right to prosper in their unique ways. And mine shouldn't solely rely on support from city officials, because for 95 years, it's relied on our customers. So please modify the universal closing times for businesses. The 10 p.m. closing for my business is arbitrary, especially given the curfew and stay at home order were just lifted nine days ago by the governor of California. I guess that's my time limit.
Thank you, Parker. Appreciate your testimony. Next speaker.
Thank you so much for the time.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the city council at this time? You can unmute your device by hitting star six.
Hi, this is Nicola Riley from the Monterey Symphony.
Hi, go ahead.
Thank you. In May of 2020, the Symphony moved its offices from Garden Road in Monterey to here in the Village at 7th and San Carlos in the Hampton Court Building on the second floor. Beginning in August, we started presenting balcony sessions, which are concerts from our balcony and have used the same format to film solo performances from the Winfield Gallery on Dolores, my museum in downtown Monterey, and just last week, Sunset Center. We are presenting at least one performance every month, which is free to watch on our website. With our main venue, Sunset Center, closed indefinitely, we have found creative ways to continue engaging our patrons and donors. The Monterey Symphony has struggled mightily in its negotiations with Sunset Center, a topic that appeared to be top of mind to this council last year. After trying and failing to negotiate with Sunset Center leadership, both board and staff, we turned to the city, who is the owner of the property and the arbiter of the lease. We met with Dave Potter, along with other presenting partners, including the BACH Festival, Carmel Music Society and Chamber Music Monterey Bay. And then continued conversations that included the city administrator and members of city council. The topic that made it to the press was the issue of securing performance dates, but it's much more than that. In February 2020, article in the Weekly that highlighted the Forest Theater Guild PAC rep in the Symphony, there was mention of the landlord being in competition with the tenant. But our issues include conflicts of interest, lack of transparency, safety concerns, unfair treatment and poor customer service. We felt that we were getting somewhere with both the mayor and city administrator agreeing that the city attorney needed to examine the lease between the city and Sunset Center, and then COVID struck. With our questions still unanswered, we again requested answers from the mayor and city council and were ignored. Owing to our relentlessness or perhaps too many citizen voices, the city disbanded our working group that actually included the presenters and asked Sunset Center to put together an independent blue ribbon panel comprised of an impressive group of citizens who don't have connections to either SEC or any of the user groups to deal with the various issues presented by the user groups. All of us, BACH, Symphony, were asked to come and present to this group and answer a series of questions. We understand that this report was assembled and delivered to SEC and the city council, and yet none of us has received a copy. Additionally, we have noticed that Forest Theater negotiations have been the subject of now four closed session city council meetings. All performing arts groups know that outdoor venues and audiences will return before those that are indoor. And the Forest Theater has the potential to be that venue for many groups. We believe that the citizens of Carmel and all the user groups of Sunset Center need to know the results of this study group report and deserve an update in a public forum. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Britt, Michael McWalters, Scenic. May I, may I have three minutes?
Certainly.
Go ahead, Michael.
First of all, a few weeks ago, I was on about the proposed closure of Scenic. And I asked a question and, well, I asked a lot of questions. The main one though is, is an unmanned barricade on Scenic in compliance with the Americans for Disabilities Act? Does anyone know the answer to that, perchance?
Sir, we don't respond to public comment at this time. We'll take your questions under submission and somebody will get back to you if you didn't give your name and phone number. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a, there was a letter to the editor in the Pinecone by Dawn Poston in Carmel Valley, and she said, "How many times are we to be outraged by the avoidable property damage that occurs each time the Carmel River Lagoon floods before something changes? When will people's lives and property be more valuable than fish?" And on the front page of the Pinecone this week, they mentioned this neighborhood that's near, near our place. It's called Amino Real River Park Place and Monteverdi Street. These are near the Carmel River Lagoon, and it flooded the homes on those streets. And my question is, can we put a, can we build a pumping station? So that when, when this, when the water gets to a certain depth, the water gets pumped out? And then I wanted to ask if we could ask the National Marine Fisheries Service for a waiver? Because when the bulldozers carve a channel that's 190 feet long, 20 feet wide and two and a half feet deep, they have to keep a plug of sand to protect the steelhead. And my question is, can we get a waiver from the National Marine Fisheries Service so we don't have to have a plug of sand? Because these atmospheric rivers only happen, what, once every two or three or four or five years, whatever it is? So that the homes don't get flooded, or at least we help the possibility that they don't get flooded. And I wanted to ask you if the contract, the fire contract that you're putting out for bid, is there a flow chart available? Because it seemed like a lot of money to me, 2.4 million for a fire contract.
Sir, that's an agendized, excuse me, that's an agendized item tonight. You could speak to that item later in the evening. Item number, item number six is review and provide direction regarding fire services RFP process.
Oh, it is, okay. I didn't know that. Okay, well, I'm done anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who would like to address the city council at this time?
Yes, please.
Okay, what's your name?
My name's Lisa.
Okay, go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, I just wanted to read something. It describes what I view as inequity of giving wine bars extended hours while punishing a bar with decreased hours. So nine days ago, as you guys know, the governor lifted the stay at home order as well as the 10 p.m. curfew. And speaking as a lifelong visitor to Carmel by the Sea, I am perplexed about the way rules are being implemented. Quite frankly, they seem arbitrary. Why are wine bar hours being extended until 10 p.m.? Three hours longer, I believe. But the only bar in town is being asked to close four hours earlier than the pre-pandemic days. This is inequitable, to say the least. The whole point of lifting a stay at home and curfew is to allow businesses to recover and do it safely, meaning outdoors and parklets and via sidewalk seating. Recovery will be difficult, but here's hoping hospitality will indeed prosper. The city manager's noticeable bias against a drinking establishment seems unnecessary and too severe and simply does not hold water. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
So Mayor, I'm just gonna start a brief timer just to allow a little bit of time for people to unmute their devices. And then I'll let you know in 30 seconds and you can decide.
I appreciate that, thank you.
To move on.
You might want to give your standard if you mute your device.
Okay. If you'd like to address the city council, you can star six. Typically, there's star six or the actual mute button on your, whatever device you're using will unmute you. I do see I have two phone numbers who are unmuted, but they're not saying anything. And it's been about a minute. It's been 50 seconds, Mayor, so I think you're probably fine.
All right, I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. And by the way, 58 and 97, I think you have your phones unmuted. If you can mute, that would help. Otherwise, we're getting some background noise. Thank you, 58, 97. All right, thanks, guys. Okay, let's move this on and city administrator announcement. Chip, what do you got?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wanted to thank the staff for working so hard during that pretty, pretty intense storm last, last week. We had everything pretty wired because of good maintenance, because of maintaining the urbanized forest, because of the investments the council's made into our storm drain system. What's more is we, we had the staff and public works step up and they worked throughout the night to help the PD by removing branches and, and the like. So a real great effort by our fire department, by our firefighter paramedics, by our police department and public work staff, as well as everyone else who helps support their efforts. So just a job real, real well done. I have two brief comments. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to give you an update. You had a meeting, a special meeting on January 20th to talk about this concept of picnicking, picnicking in the parklets, which you and I just, we had discussed, Mr. Mayor. And there were three questions that I wanted to make sure we answered for the public. Now, we didn't go forward with, with the picnic in concept because the governor did lift the stay at home order a couple of days after this. The first was, will insurance sufficiently cover the picnic area? So we reached out to some insurance, local insurance firms about the concept, again, of buying food and then sitting in another outdoor seating area in the right of way. The insurance agents did not think that their policy, policies would cover someone dining in an adjacent space, i.e. buying food from establishment A and sitting in establishment B, and then something happening, occurring in that, in that B space and having that, that insurance coverage for space B cover it. So that was the insert of the first council inquiry. The second was, does the state or county find that picnicking in the outdoor seating area is consistent with the stay at home order? The county responded and stated that the concept would not be consistent based on their interpretations of the state order. And we never got through to the state. And again, of course, the governor took some action shortly after that, so we did, we stopped following up. We didn't spend any more time or effort on, on this homework assignment. And the third was, would consumption of alcohol in the public outdoor spaces require a new or different license from state ABC? And we got a good answer from them that provided the, that it would be allowed, provided again, the, the, the owner, if you will, of the encroachment permit for the outdoor seating area had appropriate licenses from ABC in place. So kind of a mixed bag of answers there. I wanted to, the last thing I had, Mr. Mayor, was that on December 15th, you had a special meeting regarding the same topic, outdoor seating. And and just, just by way of reference, the Mayor's Ad-Hoc Committee on Outdoor Seating, which is Mayor Potter and Mayor Pro Tem Bobby Richards, will be having a meeting on Monday, the 8th at 4 p.m. We'll send out a notice for that, a public notice for that, and that will be, everybody will be available to, to, to watch at the very least that meeting. So the mayor and, and Mr. Richards set that meeting yesterday. So based on the direction from your December 15th special council meeting, we put in a uniform closure time, again, based on your direction. No new customers are allowed to be seated in the outdoor dining areas after 10 p.m. Outdoor dining areas need to be completely closed and cleared of all customers remaining by 11 p.m. at night. And this applies to all outdoor seating areas that would be public and private property. I do not have any intent, under my authority given to me by the governor, to expand these hours until we get through the ad hoc committee work with the residents, with the business owners who are on that committee. And again, we've got Jenny McMurdo from Visit Carmel, from the Chamber. We have Todd Tice, who is a business owner, a retail business owner in town. We have, I think her name was Tess from Lloyd's Shoes. We have Amy Herzog from Visit Carmel. We've got Graham Robertson, a resident. We've got Mary Crowe, who's both a restaurateur and an innkeeper. We've got Tim Toomey, who's a member of the, the command staff of the Carmel Residents Association, and Tony Salma. I think I got everyone, Mr. Mayor. And again, the mayor and, and Mr. Richards did agree to potentially expanding that group to ensure that we had a good cross section of our community represented. So again, under my authority, I have no intention on expanding the hours of any of the uses, the restaurant uses or the wine tasting rooms beyond that, which the council has previously approved. So that concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to, I try to answer any questions if you have any of me.
Any questions by council members? I don't see any. Brian, do you have anything to report from the city attorney's office?
Yes, I do. We had a closed session earlier today. There were two of them. One was a conference with real property negotiators regarding the Forest Theater and negotiations with Sunset Cultural Center under negotiation or lease price in terms of payment. There is no action report on that item. And the other item was a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, one case, and there's no reportable action on that item either.
Thank you, Brian. Council comments or announcements? Council members, Bobby Richards.
Yeah, I just wanted to make mention, I'm really excited about this new ad hoc committee that I'm part of, along with council member Tice. And it's going to be concerning the ambulance contract and the fire contract. So Carrie and I will get together probably next week and start to form this committee. And I'm really excited. I think it's going to be a positive committee. It's going to be some positive recommendations and positive, with a positive win-win outcome. With that, when I was talking to certain people about ad hoc committees, I found out that a lot of people don't really know what an ad hoc committee is. And so if I can ask Chip to maybe just give a, a 30 second lowdown on, on what exactly an ad hoc committee is and what it means to the council?
An ad hoc versus a standing committee?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Richards. An ad hoc committee is, can be appointed by, by council, formation of no more than two council members on a five-member council. It's, it's of limited duration, so it's time limited. It doesn't go on, so it addresses what Mr. Mayor just said. It's not a standing committee, and it's for a specific topic. The ad hoc committees do not necessarily have to follow the rules of the Brown Act, i.e. there's no required notices. They don't have to be public meetings. The mayor has decided that this, this committee on outdoor seating, as well as the one, I think, Mr. Richards, that you're leading on, on fire and ambulance service, will be open, open meetings. So we will publish a small agenda and there will be opportunities for public comment. But again, the, the ad hoc committee members are purely the two members of council. Everyone else is, is a guest of the committee. The members I just mentioned, I'm not the members, I'm sorry, the guests that I just mentioned of the Mayor's Committee on Ad-Hoc Outdoor Seating can come and go. So again, the mayor has asked those people to be kind of permanent guests, but they're not members of the committee. Does it answer your questions, Mr. Richards? And again, the city attorney can, can correct me if I've gotten things wrong.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Chip. I just wanted to kind of an overall view so that people understand that an ad hoc committee is, is the two council members and then members of the public or whoever we can invite to come in that we think will be beneficial to the recommendation that we're going to make. But we don't make a decision, and I think that's important, is the ad hoc committee does not make a decision. It makes a recommendation based on a more of an in-depth look, because we have so many different things coming out as, as council members. It's hard for us to really dig into every issue. So every once in a while, we have these ad hoc committees. And so like, I'm on two of them right now. I know Carrie is on this one and the climate one. Jeff is on one. So everybody has these different committees. And I just wanted the, the residents to understand what ad hoc was.
Brian, do you have any desire to extend this discussion?
I won't extend it. I'll just say I agree with the city administrator on his description.
Excellent, thank you. Jeff, you had your hand up. And Karen.
Yes, thank you. First, I would also, after Chip, like to extend all of our appreciation for the work that Marty has done over the course of the past year. I know it's been just terribly trying on planning staff with all the things going on. And I personally much appreciate all of that. And of course, after Chip, I would also like to thank the police and public works and especially and especially the volunteer CERT team for all the work that they did during the storm of last week. And I know CERT's down there monitoring people stopping to look at the sunset because of the traffic jams on scenic, and it's all great that we have all these volunteers in our community. I'd also like to acknowledge that we will be having our climate change meeting on Friday, the February 18th. And since we've already talked about the storm drain system, we won't be doing that again. But we will be hearing from a couple of organizations about greenhouse gas emissions. We'll be hearing about from Ambag, the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, and they're going to be telling us about the amount of greenhouse gas emissions that occur within the city, like when we burn natural gas in our homes, or when we drive, or when we cook. All those things release greenhouse gases in the atmosphere. And one of the climate committee's goals is to reduce all that. And so we'll be hearing from Ambag about what we currently do and how we can get that number down. We'll also be hearing from Central Coast Community Energy, formerly Monterey Bay Community Power, about what they are doing to greenify the electrical production that we consume in our homes. So if you have a gas stove, you release greenhouse gases by cooking food. If you have an electric stove, you release greenhouse gases by using electricity that might have been produced by burning natural gas or some other mechanism. So we'll be hearing from Central Coast Community Energy. And we might have a rescheduling of PG&E, the meeting that we weren't able to have last month about the resilience of our power grid. And I know that my half of town, at least for the next week, is particularly keen on hearing about the resilience of our local power grid. So it's going to be a great meeting, and we hope we'll see you all in two weeks.
Thanks, Jeff. Karen?
Yes, I wanted to fill you in. I've been attending a lot of meetings as a newly elected official. I've been to Ambag. I've been to the Illegal Dumping and Litter Task Force. I've been to four Cal Cities meetings and today, a labor relations webinar. But I wanted to share with you, because it got some attention in the Monterey County Herald about the condition of Highway 1 in particular, as well as other roads throughout the county, and the litter that has been noticed by everybody, the homeless encampments that are growing, and so on. It showed up on Nextdoor as quite an interesting topic about the litter on Highway 1. And I wanted to report, and hope that Chip will add it to the Friday Letter. There is a site called keepmontereycountyclean.org. You can go to that site and you can report litter. You can report litter that's coming out of a pickup truck, out of a waste management truck. You can report illegal dumping there. I think we all need to start using that, so, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. But something that a lot of people don't understand is that a lot of the groups that worked off community service hours by picking up highway litter have not been able to work for months due to the COVID social distancing and the PPE, the protection equipment that is needed to do that. So yes, there has been a huge amount of litter that has stayed longer than we're normally used to, which has caused great concern in such a beautiful area. But I think one of the missing components in our area, and we all, as residents and elected officials, could help perhaps, is the enforcement. I have never seen a highway patrolman pulling anyone over on Highway 1 for litter. But I think that if we just continue to pick up the litter, we will never solve the problem. We also have to enforce our litter laws and do educational opportunity. When people's business licenses come up in Carmel, perhaps that's an opportunity to educate that person about the necessity to have tarp loads and really look what they're putting in the back of their pickup truck. Because I was following a truck yesterday and stuff was blowing out all the way up Highway 1. So keepmontereycountyclean.org is the website. I believe they might even also have an app, so that if you're driving along the freeway and you see it, please report it. Thank you.
Karen, thank you. Appreciate your involvement in that issue. Maybe you get Hugo to turn the heat on in your place, and you wouldn't look like you're phoning in from the North Pole. Carrie?
Karen, as long as they're not texting or using that app while driving. Anyway, just a quick comment. Personally, I'm very relieved that the shelter-in-place order has been lifted, so we don't have to talk about picnicking in public spaces. So that's how quickly things change in this COVID environment. I just want the restaurants, now that they can have outdoor dining, to really follow their permits. I really don't want to see the police having to police that part of our city. There are certain things that the police need to be doing, and that, for me, is catching criminals and preventing criminal activity. I had a guest experience a car break-in on the street this weekend. So there is criminal activity out there, and that's what we need the police to focus on. So I really am hoping that the restaurants will comply with their permits now that they are allowed to, once again, have people dine outside. So that's my plea. Thank you.
Well said. I'd just comment on a couple of things real quickly. One is, I've been impressed by the number of calls and emails and letters that I've been getting from people saying how much they appreciate the library being up and basically, even though it's closed, it's full service, frankly, which is very impressive. So thank you to the library, their staff, their volunteers for getting out there and doing that. Then also, there's some of the comments that have been made tonight regarding the sort of lack of definition of the boundaries of the city of Carmel and the county, whether it's parking, whether it's flooding, whether it's trespassing, whether it's trash pickup. In an ideal world, actually, the boundary of Carmel, I think, would probably be west of 1 from the Carmel River to Pebble Beach. That would be a pretty defined boundary. But as it is, it's not. And so we've got these jurisdictional overlaps that happen upon occasion, where people point to the city and say, you know, you're responsible for the flooding in the lagoon. We certainly respond in mutual aid capacity, but when it comes to actually being responsible, I'm not trying to pass the ball here at all, because for 20 years, I was responsible for that area. But I'm telling you, it's not easy to go ahead and beat the city of Carmel. I had a guy from the Highlands calling up to literally blast me the other day for not taking care of issues on one, you know, issues in the Highlands area. I mean, it's a real stretch of the imagination to think that the Highlands has anything to do with Carmel. There's also people that believe that the crossroads is in the city, Carmel High School's in the city, Mission Ranch is in the city. They're not. It's a really, really odd boundary. But so when we can't do much about it, except complain to the next-up level of government, it's not our fault. We just, we really have worked real hard to try to collaborate as much as possible where we can. Parking on the point, for example, that seems to be an issue. Maybe we can help out a little bit there. But honestly, it's hard to go ahead and share jurisdictions when everybody's so stretched resource-wise. Not really apology, it's just an explanation. So that said, why don't we move on to the Orders of Work business tonight, which we have the consent calendar before. Four items on consent. Any member of council wishing to pull an item from consent? All right, anybody in the public wishing to speak to the consent calendar? Here, no one, and see no one. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve items 1 through 4.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, Britt, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
For Lito?
Aye.
Tice?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Okay, passes with five yes votes.
That's very good. All right, then on to Order of Businesses. First item is item number five, which is a mid-year status report regarding fiscal year 2021. Chip, do you want to tee this up before we hand it off to Sharon?
Sharon has been polishing her presentation all day, Mr. Mayor. I think I'll just pepper it, flavor it as we go along. We're a pretty good tag team, but no strong introductory comments, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Sharon, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and council, and I believe Robin is going to assist in presenting the presentation. Thank you, Robin. Okay. The purpose of tonight's agenda item is to provide an update on the fiscal year 2021 budget. In particular, we are looking at the performance on the first six months of the fiscal year, July 1st to December 31st of 2020. As part of the review, we're able to identify areas of the budget that may have potential savings and alternatively, areas where spending may be greater than planned and need to make adjustments. And we do have two of those adjustments for your consideration this evening. Next slide, please. And although the primary purpose of tonight's discussion is the current fiscal year budget, we are on the cusp of the development of the next fiscal year budget, and we are seeking direction from council regarding the discretionary grant program for the upcoming fiscal year. Next slide, please. Before we look at the revenue and expenditures in detail, it's important to think about our budget framework and what the assumptions were in the spring and June of 2020 when the budget was adopted. At that point in time, general fund, operating expenditures, plus our debt service, equaled about $19.8 million in anticipated expenditures. Due to the economic impact associated with COVID, our revenues were projected to significantly decline and anticipated to come in at $18.8 million, which left a shortfall between our expenditures and our revenues of about $1 million. In order to provide a balanced budget, we anticipate using $1 million of fund balance, which, again, is prior year savings, it's not reserve. And so that is the framework that we're working under as we look at the revenues and expenditures thus far and how they're mirroring these assumptions. Next slide, please. This chart depicts our major revenue sources, the adopted budget, the receipts from July through December 31st, and based on these assumptions, any preliminary estimated actual that staff has at this time. Again, the estimated actual will be known on June 30th or sometimes a month or two thereafter when we end the fiscal year. But based on the assumptions so far, property tax is remaining fiscally sound, bolstered by a strong real estate market. Again, based on our December 2020 receipts from the county of Monterey, when we compare that to our performance of last December, we're a little ahead of target. And if this trend continues through the rest of the fiscal year, we could finish with $600,000 more in property tax revenue than budgeted.
Sharon, if I may, at this point, I mean, this is council where we can start talking about the lack of, you know, a crystal ball, the crystal ball that we actually don't have. So when we were forging this budget, we were kind of at the beginning of COVID. We had no idea what the impact would be on our visitor trade. So our transit occupancy tax or our sales tax, let alone what the real estate market was going to do. If we had had a crystal ball and it worked well, we would have seen that people in more urbanized areas, all of a sudden, could work remotely, and they decided to move to the Monterey Peninsula. If you talk to, you know, Ben Beasley and Judy Perfett and others, there is no, what's the word, when you don't have, there's no stock, there's no houses to sell. They've been sold, and that's why, again, what you see here is we estimated a much more moderate growth in real property tax, and it's far exceeded that. We point to the Laola House on San Antonio that was previously assessed at about $250,000 that sold for $8 million, according to the Pine Cone. Well, the real property taxes there went from about $2,500 a year to $80,000 a year, of which we get 6%. So that's where you're going to see this big revenue jump. Sharon, I have estimated that we could receive up to $600,000 more in property taxes than we estimated. But again, we felt it much more prudent, and of course, council did as well, to have budgeted conservatively and come in with more revenue than the reverse of that, budgeted too exuberantly and come in below estimates. So, and I think that what you'll see here is that holds true for all the revenue estimates. But thank you, Sharon.
Thank you. State sales tax and our local sales tax, Measure C, are coming in on target, both in terms of the dollars and the percentage or the amount that we expect to receive from the state based on the state dispersment cycle. We aren't making any adjustments at this time. However, we do urge a sense of caution. Sales tax, again, is very fluid. It's tied to consumer spending and demand. Carmel's sales tax is heavily influenced by restaurants and retail, and we know that that has been a start-and-stop type relationship based on the COVID protocols and direction from the state. And we do anticipate that there may be a state change in the methodology for county-wide pools, which is related to online sales that could negatively impact our barely burns, our statewide, our city share of the statewide sales tax. And again, we'll know more in the next few weeks as finance staff meet with our sales tax consultant and look at the third quarter performance. And again, we'll provide those updates to council. TOT, we'll delve into in a little more detail in the next slide. Charges for services, again, an area that's difficult to predict because it too is based on consumer demand for services. Our largest categories are building services, planning services, and ambulance transport. And those things change, again, depending on consumer demand for those services and other factors such as the real estate market as well. What we do know is that if the next six months perform exactly like the first six months, then overall, charges for services could be down. But again, demand is not on a cyclical basis. So, you know, it could uptick in the summer months for services such as building. But at this point in time, it is trending down. And then the category of other is a combination of things such as our business license, our franchise fee, motor vehicle and lieu, and other assortment of revenues. And again, those are all tracking where we expected and on budget. Next slide. This chart really depicts the performance of the revenue, the adopted budget versus the six-month actual. Again, it's a depiction of where the current revenues are compared to the budget. It's also an important chart to reiterate the sense of timing. For example, we talked about property tax and that it's coming in high and has brought in a little over $4 million. However, we won't receive that next big tranche of secured property tax until the late April, early May, after people pay their property tax. So we still have a little bit of a gap there, which is expected based on timing. Same with sales tax. Those come in quarterly from the state, so it'll take time to, you know, hopefully hit that blue bar or even surpass it. TOT is collected bimonthly, and as we said, charges for services are based on the demand. So if people are demanding those services, they're being processed as the request comes in versus on a quarterly or a monthly or bimonthly basis. Next slide, please. Speaking of TOT, transient occupancy tax, this is really one of the hardest categories to predict. Again, it's based on consumer willingness and desire to travel, and related to that travel is the occupancy level of the hotel and the room rate. And as we put together these estimates, it was in the spring, right on the cusp of COVID-19. And as we put together these estimates, it was in the spring, right on the cusp of COVID-19, and we really anticipated that revenue would be down in this area. Again, it's hard to really model because this is an unprecedented situation with the pandemic. We've looked at literature related to 9/11, we looked at how fiscal year 1920 ended up performing as well. And so we were more conservative on this revenue projection. What you will note in this chart is that the July through October actuals came in strong, 2 million of our budget of 2.5 million. However, we anticipated November and December to, again, be incremental and budgeted 218,000. I can tell you, as of a couple hours today, and I appreciate the hard work of the finance staff in employing these numbers, we have received 178,000. So we will likely reach that estimate and maybe even exceed it. But again, those remittance are coming in on a daily basis. Again, modeling fiscal year 1920, we expected incremental January and February and March and April with possible uptick in May and June, similar to prior years. Again, this was based in the spring of 2020, and we are now faced with the second wave of the pandemic, more travel restrictions and other restricted activities by the state, which again have them lifted. So again, what we expect that we will likely see when it comes to TOT is a lot of ups and downs and some cycles of months of high performance and then months of low performance. Next slide, please.
Sharon, if I can, if I just stand this side for, so you'll recall, council, that the TOT remittance is due 30 days after the period. So for example, the November-December period, the hotels have to submit their TOT, has to be postmarked by the last day of January, which in this case was Sunday, the 31st, two days ago. So it falls to the following day. So the TOT had to be postmarked by yesterday. So again, what we have received is $178,000, but as Sharon was saying, that's probably, I think, all the short-term rentals, the legal short-term rentals have submitted, and then I think about half the ins. So again, we'll probably eclipse that amount, but that's why we have this lag in the receipts, much like, again, receiving sales tax from the state. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you for clarifying, and I would note too that the estimated actual has been revised upward by that 218,000 from the staff report to reflect the November and December estimate. And again, this will be an area that staff will be monitoring as well as our other revenues and bringing forward updates to council. Next slide. Again, as we mentioned, it's very hard to find a model of how TOT will perform, given the pandemic and the economic impact. What this slide does show is that our high-performing months are July and August, September, October, and then May and June, again, as we start that next summer season. You can see in fiscal year 1819, the performance, and that's when our TOT was 6.8 million. In fiscal year 1920, TOT was tracking strong, and then COVID hit, and you can see that downward turn in March and April and May and June. At that point in time, we estimated that TOT, which again had been budgeted at that higher level, to drop to 4.5 million when the fiscal year ended and we did receive the receipts, it was closer to 5.1 million. But again, quite a big decline in our TOT based on COVID. And again, as we modeled fiscal year 2021, we assumed a similar projection downward for those winter months, again, not knowing what would unfold with the pandemic and then a return back up in May and June. Next slide, please. On the expenditure side, that is tracking with the budget. Our expenditures, with 50% of the fiscal year elapsed, typically you would expect about 50% of your expenditures. But again, certain type of expenses have different payment cycles. Some are paid in the beginning of the fiscal year, some are paid on a monthly or quarterly basis, and then some are later in the fiscal year. But our salary and benefits, which again is our largest category of expense, is right where we expected, about half of the budget. The UAL is our unfunded actuary liability related to pension, and again, that's an amount that is provided by CalPERS, and we make that payment. So we don't anticipate any savings there. It's going to be the amount that CalPERS provided to us, nearly 1.6 million. Services and supplies, again, tracking with the fiscal year and about half of the budget spent. Debt service, you can see in the chart as only 2% has been expended. Part of that is timing. Our pension obligation bond of approximately 700,000 won't be paid until later in the year. And then the other parts will be the savings materialized by the bond refinancing for the Sunset Center that council approved in the fall of 2020. Next slide, please.
I'm sorry, Sharon, I was muted. Can I just go back one more time? Council, it's important to note that based on where we are, now, you have fully budgeted a series of positions that I had held the recruitment on because of the unknowns regarding the budget. I have released four public safety positions for recruitment. Those include the police commander position, a police dispatch position, the building official, and the firefighter paramedic position. So Maxine and her team, her team of one, will begin those recruitments. And again, those are positions that are fully budgeted within the budget for the current fiscal year. So we'll be working to fill those, and obviously that will impact our expenditure column as we, depending on when we fill them, of course. Thank you.
So the previous slide looked at the expenditures at that object level, salary and benefits, services and supplies, debt. This chart is looking at the expenditures at the department level. And when people think about government, they think about the services that are being provided in the departments. The staff report has a short narrative related to each department. This chart is to really illustrate that the departments are, again, tracking with the budget projections. There are a few areas that we anticipate may need adjustment related to legal. We do have an adjustment for consideration tonight related to the ambulance, related to unanticipated vehicle repair and engine replacement. Public works, barring any further winter storms and potential tree damage, or also vehicle repairs related to the street sweeper, should remain on target as well. But those are some of the areas that we'll continue to monitor and bring forward to council for any adjustment if we feel that any of those departments may be approaching their appropriation limit and may be over budget. Next slide, please. Again, the primary purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide a status report on the fiscal year to date. Again, overall revenues appear to be stronger than predicted, but there is some fluidity and some bit of an unknown, particularly when it comes to the TOT. However, our general fund expenditures are on budget, again, absent any unanticipated expense. So we do feel that the fiscal year should end net neutral, that we will be able to mitigate some of the planned use of the fund balance. And we do have this evening two budget amendments for your consideration. The first is to transfer $25,000 in savings from our insurance liability premiums to the ambulance for the vehicle maintenance and for the engine repair. And we are continuing to receive donations from the community to support the MutMitt program, and so we do have a budget adjustment to increase the public works budget by $3,150, and that will be offset by revenue. And then as we start to work on next year's budget, we are seeking direction on the discretionary grant program. In 2017, council established the discretionary grant program to really provide funding support to schools and nonprofits that provide services and other community benefits. Over time, we typically receive requests of about $20,000. It's been higher in prior years. In the last several years, we put a cap on the amount of the requests in dollars. However, the process does require a great amount of effort by the nonprofits to put together their financial statements and their grant application. And as we start preparing for next year's budget, knowing that revenues will still be under their pre-COVID levels of performance, that we have cost increase related to the pension, we are seeking direction on whether to open up the grant process and put forward the applications for the nonprofit organizations. And those, again, are the highlights of the presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Counsel, if I can just kind of sum up and continue to urge caution, and I think, again, Sharon and I are linked at the hip on our conservative budgeting nature. We just don't know what's going to happen over the spring here. Obviously, in all of California, the rollout of the vaccine has been slow. In Monterey County, it's been pretty abysmal. Councilmember Reamers, previous councilmember Reamers, other councilmembers that have retired from the council have had to travel to Santa Clara and Santa Cruz County to be vaccinated. We're just not getting the supply here, so we're not sure how that's going to roll out or how it's going to affect our local economy. The new COVID variants that are coming, how that's going to influence the state or Monterey County health with potential future stay-at-home orders. I think we're going to have a pretty big weekend, next weekend, which is Valentine's Day weekend. It's also Dead Presidents' Days, so there's a three-day weekend. But again, we just don't know what's going to happen. March is historically pretty quiet. You know, sometimes we get an Easter bump or we get a spring break bump, but again, we just don't know what's going to happen. So we're committed to coming back to you in April and May and tuning this up. If you have, we'll also be bringing to you, if something breaks or we have a, perhaps a capital project, something that really should be done, like a roof that's not in our maintenance budget, we'll bring those types of things to you. Or you can also provide us with some direction to come back over the next couple of months with a couple of carefully screened projects for funding, again, in the March-April-May timeframe before we adopt the new budget. I do want to remind you that there are two groups that gave pretty significant financial givebacks, our PD, to the tune of almost $50,000 in deferred compensation increase, and then the executive team did a give back, and I think that's in the $115,000 range, all told. So again, those were one-year commitments on, I believe, a one-year, July 1st, you know, will be, unless we continue with this dire economic pattern, we'll be, you know, giving that back to the employees. But again, I just want to continue to thank you for your cautious nature, and certainly appreciate Sharon for her good work and her cautious and conservative nature on the budget as well. We're happy to have you bounce some questions off us, we'll do our best.
Sharon, great report. Honestly, very thorough as always. Council members, questions? No comments yet? We'll take it up to the public for comments from them, but any questions at the moment? I don't see any. All right, I'll open it up for public comment at this time. It's an opportunity for any member of the public to comment on this item. There's a three-minute limitation on that testimony. If you'd state your name for the record, I would appreciate it. Those wishing to testify do step forward.
Star six will unmute your device. Mayor, there's only a couple of people outside of staff and council who are on the call.
I don't see a whole lot of movement towards the mic, so close the public comment period, bring it back to council for direction. Council members, your choice. Jeff?
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Sharon. I know I was prodding you to make some changes in your presentation today for the TOT numbers, and I really appreciate, I really appreciate the newfound accuracy in those numbers. I want to go over what I have listed on my piece of paper as sort of the revenue differences between what we have, what we approved as part of our budget and where we are in terms of our estimates. So I have about approximately a $600,000 increase in the property tax revenue number. That's about right? I see some nods. Okay. And I have no change in the sales tax number. And with the change in the TOT number reflecting the November-December payments, I have a $1.2 million increase from what we budgeted to where we now expect to be. And I understand that these are estimates, I can't stress that enough, but I understand, I take all of Chip's caveats with all the respect that they're due, which is a lot of respect. And I see that the charge for services is, we're estimating that to be a little less than $400,000 down. So what I get, what I get when I add up those revenue numbers is $1.4 million over our estimates. So when I add up the, when I add up the property tax increase and the TOT increase and then subtract the charge for services number, I end up with about $1.4 million. Is that, I'm tracking so far?
Yes, sir.
And then the change in the debt service number, because we refinanced the Sunset Center debt, that's down, that's $427,000 down. And I know that when we refinanced that debt, we looked at all the debt that the city has, the pension liability debt and the Sunset Center debt and all that, and we tried to sort of smooth it out. So I think that next year, it's somewhat close to where we are this year. Okay, so my inclination, I know, you know, Carrie and I are on the Climate Change Committee, and I know we are really stuck with our greenhouse gas emission work, which is, you know, $20,000 or give or take. And I take Chip's comments that especially the managerial workers, but especially the police union, of all the unions was kind enough to give back their salary increase last year. And I'm very appreciative. I know everyone on the council is very appreciative of that. And I go down the, I go down the rest of the capital improvement project budgets, and there are just a lot of things on that budget, like to just pull one out of thin air, the windows on the Sunset Center, which are in sort of desperate need of rehab. These things are just not going to get better. And every year we wait, you know, every year we wait on those Sunset Center windows, you know, the cost just goes up because eventually, you know, one of them is going to leak, and then we're going to have interior damage inside the Sunset Center or whatever. So I have to say, I'm in favor of, you know, I know Chip doesn't want to, I know Chip may not like this, but I personally am in favor of using the debt service savings and funding some of those things and maybe other things that are important to other council members as we move, as we move through the rest of the fiscal year. I think these projects that I've mentioned all have to be done anyway. They're all, you know, the ones I mentioned, the greenhouse- They're all, you know, the ones I mentioned, the greenhouse gas work and the Sunset Center work and the salaries, these are all time sensitive. And I think those things and other things that are part of the capital improvement project budget are also time sensitive. And they, they would benefit from six months of advancement as opposed to waiting until next year's budget. So I would be in favor of spending a few hundred thousand dollars and giving staff some direction to come back to us next month with perhaps a list. So not really work on the list tonight. I know everybody's got projects, but maybe not work on the list tonight. But come back next month and have a discussion about what we might do with that, with that debt service money. That would still, you know, that would still leave the revenue increases, the $1.4 million of revenue increases to cover the, the general fund shortfall, which is right over a million dollars. We'd still have $400,000 to increase the general fund if those revenue numbers pan out. And as much as I, you know, appreciate Chip's comments, I think that's a good middle ground for where we are between being, you know, overly conservative and just postponing all these projects and overly liberal, which is just spending down all the money. So that's where I stand. And thank you, thank you all, all my council members for humoring me on that.
So Jeff, if I might, I'm not trying to humor you at all. I think it's an interesting discussion to have. I'm just wondering what difference does it make prematurely when we don't know the outcome of the epidemic and going ahead and doing it six months from now as part of our normal process?
So I, I have an answer for that. The greenhouse gas work, so just to use an example that I'm close with, if we wait six months to do the greenhouse gas work, we will not get our climate change project done in time. So, you know, we have a fairly lengthy, fairly complicated project that starts with getting, you know, starts what we're going to do in a couple of days, which is getting the forecasts and then trying out scenarios for revising what we're going to do in order to produce those estimates for the next years. And if we wait, if we push that part of this project back by six months, then the Climate Change Committee won't get, we will not meet our deadline of, of next summer to have our work done. So that's an example of, you know, how, how some of these things are time, some of these things are time sensitive. You know, the Sunset Center windows, to use another example, yeah, the incremental difference of doing it now versus doing it later is small, but there's a, there's a risk that if some of these windows leak through the rest of this winter, that we may, we may have a bigger project to do next year rather than just the Sunset Center, rather than just the Sunset Center windows. So I'm not particularly close. I obviously am close to the greenhouse gas number, greenhouse gas work. I'm not particularly close to the Sunset Center work, but that seems, seemed to me to be a sort of a good example of a project that we, we have to do fairly near term anyway. And maybe it's at the top of the list. I would, I would sort of leave that to staff to decide which projects, you know, staff in consultation with us individually to decide which projects are sort of at the top of the list and how we might move some of the smaller projects forward.
And I'm not trying to dominate the discussion here, but Jeff, you've been one of the most concerned people about the pandemic. You know, its vulnerability, the impacts to the community, the lack of need to go out. We shouldn't go out and dine, you know, let's be as restrictive as possible. What is your newfound level of confidence that it's going to be a safe environment to go out into? Especially when we hear that there's all these new variants coming up on the virus. And I'm, I'm not trying to be an economic pessimist here, just trying to be a realist. Your answer?
Oh, my answer would be that I'm relying on staff for, for the predictions of what. I mean, seriously, I'm relying on staff for predictions of what the revenues are. You know, Chip and I have been having this conversation. You know, Chip will tell you over the course of the past, you know, the course of the past months. And I don't, you know, to me, it's not a, to me, it's a question of what stance is the council going to take, you know, given, given what staff has predicted. So that's, that's where I am.
So when I was in another body somewhere in bike career, I had a colleague who couldn't really pronounce the difference between fiscal and physical. So he was very prone to saying that, well, as I look at the county physically, and I'd sit there and I go, I think you mean fiscally. Well, this time, in this case, we actually have an overlap in this malapropor misuse of the English language, where the physical nature of the county is actually affecting our fiscal condition. And I don't have enough comfort with our physical condition to say, I know what our fiscal condition is going to be like. I never actually thought these two would marry up ever, but in all ironies it has, where the guy was, this person couldn't, couldn't say that, couldn't pronounce the difference or enunciate it. But the fact of the matter is, this is our physical condition in this county is going to affect our fiscal well-being. And that's my opinion now. I turn it over to others, and I didn't want to pick out, pick on you, Jeff. I just thought there was a decent analogy to be had there. Bobby?
Thank you. Now, I'm, I understand what council member Baron is saying about spending some of this money for something that is going to be very expensive in the future. I'm dead set against any of this money being spent for something that's special to a council member. I mean, this is tax dollars. It has to be spent on issues that are important to the city in a fiscally manner. And so I guess my question would be, if we were to do something along the lines of a greenhouse research, would that save us money or cost us money? Like the, the example of the Sunset Center, those windows, if we don't replace them, they could be a very costly fix. If we don't do the greenhouse thing, the study, would that be a costly fix? Or will we just not get the report that some people want?
I, I can, I can take a stab at an answer, Mr. Richards. The, the Climate Action Plan, it much like this, I, it's ironically enough, we talked about the Storm Drain Master Plan. Someone, Mr. Mayor, mentioned our pavement management plan. They act as, they act as guides. You know, there, there's some critique in some communities about doing planning because they think, well, it's just going to go on a shelf and, but you actually, this council has used your, your planning, your capital planning efforts as a, as a recipe for helping form your, your capital work. Form and inform. So the, the, I would, my answer to you would be, and again, you know, I, my fiscally conservative nature, don't call me Tipper Gore, please. But, but I, I think of the green, of the greenhouse gas emission, which is a component of our Climate Action Plan. The other component of which, which is a little bit more expensive, is looking at sea level rise as, as part of the, the land use planning for the future of the community, as well as a guide for how you are going to be challenged to invest capital, capital funds in the future. So, you know, whether it's done today, now, or, or next year is, is purely a policy decision of the council. We had the money in the draft budget last year. We excised it when we were in, when we were even, well, the same period. I mean, it was, we just had no idea about what, what the future under COVID was going to bring. And we know, we know, we're just, it's just as unclear in my humble opinion at this point in time.
So, so Chip, I'm, I'm sorry, Carrie, go ahead.
Well, I mean, if it's, so I guess we have some good news here that the TOT numbers are coming in stronger than we anticipated. And part of that is because people are finding that after being in shutdown for so long, they need a change of scenery in a safe place, which obviously Carmel affords them. So it's nice to see that. We, when we created the budget, we had to cut, we slashed it.
Twenty-six.
Slashed the capital projects. We, we, at the time, we had not made the decision about refinancing the Sunset Center bond. So we say, so the council and the staff made the decision to save us some money there. And what I'm seeing is that hopefully we won't need to go and spend one point, over a little over $1 million in fund balance because from my perspective, we only have about six or seven million in our fund balance. And it takes $1 million of cash a month to run this city. So that's only six or seven months. Which, if we learn from other cities who have had really bad financial problems, that, that can run into huge problems for cities if they don't have the cash to run their city. I very much respect the police union and the managers and Chip who made sacrifices for this budget. And if we find that we're in the black, I think one of our first obligations is to pay that back because obviously COVID has been an extreme situation that, that has affected the entire staff. But these particular staff members chose to make a sacrifice. And I think we really need to respect that. And if we're going to be in the black and not have to, especially if we're not going to go into fund balance, I think we should think about making that a council decision to make that their salaries good as of last July. So I think that's really important. I think what Jeff is trying to say is that there are projects and small projects that take months to get going, even if we have the funds. So just because climate change needs $20,000, it takes months to figure out, you know, to put out what we're seeing with another, you know, whether it's Flanders, put out an RFQ. So it takes months, even if you have the money allocated, to actually be able to spend it. So we may not spend that money until the new fiscal year because the time it takes to get some of these things going with the, the process. So I think that's what he's saying. The climate project actually is a mandate by the state to have every city come up with it. So we're not doing this just for fun. We're actually doing it because we're mandated to do it, much like what we just saw at the beginning of the council was the mandate for the garbage and the organics. So what, what I think, I'd like to see Chip come back, maybe in March, and see, especially if we continue with COVID not being in a lockdown situation. Visit Carmel does expect that the desire for people to come to Carmel will be greater than, especially drive market. So I would expect that things to start picking up in the hotel industry in Carmel. So I, I, I think it's prudent of us to see that after six months, where we're at and to say, okay, we're faring a little better than we expected. And obviously, it was really hard to predict, that what, what could we do now to get going on a couple of projects so that we have a little momentum? That's what, I think that's what we're trying to say. So I hope I've made myself clear.
So Carrie, if I might, just let me see if I do understand the same thing. What you're suggesting is to defer just until next month, specific to the Climate Action piece, and also take a bigger look at the economy as it is, and, and also the situation with the pandemic itself? I don't, and I don't necessarily have a problem with that because, for example, getting, getting vaccinated, my 97-year-old mother-in-law, my 99-year-old stepdad and our 99-year-old aunt are having to drive to Santa Cruz to get vaccinated. That's just not right. It doesn't make any sense. I think it'll get better, but I'm not optimistic it's going to happen overnight. I don't have a problem funding this at some point. It's not, that's what I'm about. I'm just trying to be responsible here. When we, we, Chip, didn't you cut 22 positions? And then you actually, you actually laid off some people, which I'm sure as any administrator, that's a very, very hard thing to do. And I, I, I mean, I saw how distressed you were by having to go and tell these people, I'm sorry, you don't have a job now. And to go ahead and say, we're going to go ahead and start seeing a light at the end of the tunnel. I don't even know if it's an oncoming train, quite frankly, in that tunnel. I'm, I'm still very, very concerned about the situation as it exists. I'm not, I don't want this to come out as being, I'm against the project as a whole. I'm not at all. I just think timing is everything in this unknown climate. Karen, did you want to pull that in? I'm sorry, Carrie.
There's one other point I want to make. The other point I want to make is there is one income source we are leaving on the table, and that is paid parking. And we need to start looking at paid parking because all those visitors that came to our beach this last fiscal year could have been paid parking.
Yep.
And, you know, when I look at other cities, Monterey, they have part, paid parking in their beachfront area. And in the business district, there is no paid parking. So we, we really need to look at another income source that would also help alleviate some of the stress and would help take away the dependence on some of our other income sources for people that just come and visit our beach. And so I would like to ask the staff, and it's not a lot of work because we've done a lot of the work. And we can do it with technology so that we can take residents and locals into consideration for some free parking. So we're leaving that on the table, and we could be far ahead of what we are now. And I'd like the staff to really start looking into paid parking. So that's the other thing I'd like to mention.
Karen, before I go to Chip for a comment on that, why don't you comment? I appreciate that. Thank you, Karen.
Yes, I hear what Councilman Baron is saying and Councilman Tice. And I have seen the hard work their committee is doing. And this isn't a choice. This is something the city has to do. And they are woefully behind, actually. So I think we would be penny wise and pound foolish not to get those studies done that we need to complete this project. Otherwise, we wander in the desert, not knowing where we're going if we don't have a plan. We just saw the drainage report and how sea level rise is going to perhaps flood Mission Trail Nature Preserve. It might flood other places. We have to prepare, even though I don't think I will be here when all that happens. I think we would be irresponsible if we don't get going and get it finished. I also think it would show great respect for the committee that has worked so hard to show that we think it's important. One other thing, and I know we'll all have little pet projects, but we're going to have to clean our streets downtown. We're going to have to get ready for our influx of visitors and spruce up our town a little bit because it's not looking as good as all of us would like it to look, I think. So I think I would like to see staff come back with these, with some money that we actually start to spend. Sometimes you have to spend some money to attract some money. And you also have to look at what we are required to do. If, if we were just choosing to do the climate change report because we didn't have anything better to do, I could understand putting it off, but that is not a choice. Thank you.
Bobby?
Thanks. Just to be clear, I'm not, it's not that I'm against the climate control, and I understand that we have a mandate. Is the greenhouse, I'm not sure about that, is the greenhouse component mandated as well? Does anybody know?
Yes, so the, so the greenhouse gas emissions study, which is, it's, it's, it's a scientific analysis, not something we can do in-house, is, is a mandated component or element of a Climate Action Plan.
When, is there, is there a timeline that we were given for that? And so I'm sorry about going on down those wormholes.
I don't, I don't know the answer, sir.
So given, given the vagaries to this, I do like Carrie's suggestion. Why don't we bring this back next month for full presentation on the climate? we bring this back next month for full presentation on the climate action plan, what that means, what's it going to cost? And then go ahead and have some discussion about this other grant opportunities. What's before us tonight is simply receipt of the budget presentation with a six-year, six-month period, and then a resolution for one augmentation for the ambulance and $3,100 for Mutt mitts. But I do think that there's, I think there's actually consensus out here, I just don't know whether we're going to get there tonight, based on everybody's concern. Jeff, what's your thoughts? You're the architect here, how do you feel about that idea?
I think that's a good architect, I think that, sorry, I think that's a good idea. I would like to, you know, I'm not sure if we're to the point where, let me, let me toss this back at you, Mayor. Are we talking about, you know, the climate committee's $20,000 and the salaries that, you know, Carrie and I spoke of, like, what's the, what's, you know, if we're going to give staff guidance to come back next month, what are the parameters? You know, what are the parameters of that guidance? You know, I mentioned the $427,000 from the Sunset Center bonds, but I don't know that that's the right amount. I don't know.
And to that, Jeff, I'm not really to start carving out, you know, projects right now. I mean, if there's some level of urgency about this, that we're going to lose, we're going to fall out of some state mandate, some state order, we're going to jeopardize the whole program, I'm going to be interested in talking about that. But as far as going ahead and starting to augment, you know, supplement monies for projects we deferred, I cannot support that at all right now, especially having laid off people, having gone ahead and cut our budget drastically. We use one-time fund balance, not surpluses, we use one fund, one-time fund balance carryovers last year, and that's what we balanced, it was almost a million dollars last year. I suspect it's going to be the same this year. Operational expenses and government never get less, they always go up. And so this is very good news, frankly, and I think we're clouding the good news with this desire to go ahead and get some sort of beef over climate change. I don't think there's an argument on it at all. I just would rather us have a full-blown discussion about the value of where we go ahead and spend the $20,000, so we don't just look like we carved out something capriciously, that's all my position is.
I think, I think, you know, to your point, I mean, I think that when I spoke earlier about the $400,000 number for the 20,000 versus the $20,000 number, I think that's in an effort to, you know, I realize that this project is obviously close to my heart and close to Carrie's heart, because we've put a lot of time and effort in, but I don't want it to seem like we were, you know, to Bobby's point, I mean, I didn't want to seem like that we were just carving out something for just the two of us.
No, I, I realize, Bobby, you might have misspoke a little bit there.
Yeah, and I don't, so I don't, I don't want to, you know, I'm not trying to, you know, the, the, the point here is not to simply ask for my $20,000 and just go home, or mine and Carrie's $20,000 and just go home. It was to sort of, you know, try to establish the parameters about, you know, those other projects, you know, like, just, you know, the Sunset Center project or whatever, Carrie's parking, you know, what are we as a council, if we're going to give, if we're going to give staff the, the direction to come back next month, how much direction do we want to give them? Is it just the climate change project, or is it, you know, is it a bigger pot, is it a bigger pot? What's the councils, you know, I was hoping that we would have a discussion, you know, about, you know, I hear what you're saying, that, you know, I hear what you're, you know, I'll phrase it as conservative stance, and that's okay. I hear what you're saying, and maybe if that's the council's direction, then that's the council's direction. I don't know what the right answer is. I think we make better decisions as five than as five-one.
Well, maybe it's, it's a part of, once again, working with the staff to see what that number is. I'm sure that there are other projects that other council people would like to do as well. So it's, it's just, you know, do we have a little pot of money that we would be willing to get some things going on? That's really the question, and consider the staff. That's where I'm coming from.
So we could, we could, Dave, to, to back to your earlier point, we could, for example, give staff direction to come back with, you know, $300,000 or $400,000 worth of projects, and then, wait, 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 I know, you're shaking your head, and then just draw a line somewhere, you know, here's staff's priorities, and then we could say, that's too much, let's draw the line at $200,000 or $150,000. Like, that's a discussion, you know, we could get staff to do more work than maybe is needed for next month, and we could, as a council, decide where to draw that line.
And Jeff, for me, the only thing that's going to compel me to support this, any allocation of any dollars right now, is some level of urgency, some misstep because of the state mandate, some miscue on our part that causes us to lose a project. And I don't think, I don't think anything else that's out there is going to compel me to go ahead and spend any money until I get a look at the budget as a whole, and do this in one, do this holistically, not piecemeal. I can't go ahead and start carving out, you know, Project Sunset Center over, you know, a curb and gutter, a trip and fall place, and I just can't do that. I don't think it's responsible from a public expenditure of money. So, but if there's, if there's something that's compelling with this project, which I would support if I did it at the entire budget and looked at everything, but right now, when we do not know the consequences of, we're halfway through our budget, which we really shed a lot of blood over, a lot of angst over there, a lot of pain, and a lot of people really, really, you know, our employees, they suffered. We asked them to lose money, they asked them to take away, you know, and I think, I think we ought to honor that. And so I can't, I can't just say, I'm going to add a bunch of other things into this souffle that we're going to cook, and say, okay, here's what we want to do, and here's what we don't want to do. I can't do that. So I would be very specific on to climate change piece, what's the mandate there? Why do we have to do this right now? And if it's compelling, I'll support it, but otherwise, I'm going to want to defer it. Chip, are you trying to say something? You're either giving yourself a big massage, or you're sweating like a pig.
It's the, it's the first one. We, if you, if your direction is to come back with a, a menu of options, Council, we can absolutely do that, and I can guarantee you, I will not let Bob cede it with, you know, with, with bizarre things, I promise. We will continue to have our, our conservative posture on, you know, again, like, you know, there was a window, Mr. Barron's correct, Councilmember Barron, there was a window at one of the cottages that blew out. It didn't break, it just shot out of the, the casework. And so, yeah, I mean, so we can, we can come back with, and you can, you can, you can do it now, you can add them for the new fiscal year, whatever you want to do, but I, I like that idea. I think, I think that's got some real traction. And we'll, of course, thank you for the, Councilmember Tice for bringing it up, we'll, we'll, I'll get you a hard number on, again, the employee givebacks, and we'll, we'll add that in, you can, you can choose from that as well. So it's, it's good discussion, Council. We do need to take action on the one resolution tonight, but the rest of it, if, if the council's willing, we can come back in just, just three weeks. Three weeks from tonight, we'll be back.
We'll be back, going ahead and picking favorite projects? Is that what you're saying?
If that's your, if that's your direction, Mr. Mayor, yes, that's what, we, we would be able to do that, if that's your direction.
All right, Council, I'm just dominating the conversation here, I'm sorry, but I don't see the point in that right now, where I think we're sending a bad message to the public, and that we're being premature in the expenditure of dollars we have now, but we don't know what is forecasted to come in the future. And I don't want to have that discussion, but I'll look to you guys, what do you want to do? I'm just one vote.
I would agree with you, Mayor.
Carrie?
So, so you think March is too soon?
I don't have a problem bringing back the climate change one at all in March. That's fine. Bring that back.
But the other, but the, but the other, so, so the other would be April or May, then in terms of taking a look at things?
Yep, exactly. Because what I heard tonight was something I hadn't heard before, that there is a mandate out there that we have to get this thing going by a certain period of time. I didn't know that, and I apologize if I was ill-informed or under-informed. Jeff, what do you think?
I'm thinking.
What was that?
I said, you've asked me what I thought, what I, what I think, and I said, I'm thinking.
Karen?
I think, here's what I think. I think that, you know, I think that taking this poll as to whether we want to move forward is fine. To your point about climate, to your point about the $20,000, you know, I would say, yeah, I think I'm willing to fight for the money. I wonder whether we should just decide that now. And I'll, I'll leave that up to you. You know, we can go next month, you know, we can come back next month with a full, you know, put staff through, put staff through this, and we can have this discussion about this project next month, or we can just, you know, honestly, the council can just give the climate change committee the $20,000, and we can just move on from, move on tonight and just not see this again. I would share something with you, on sort of a climate change note, you know, we had the discussion, which I would encourage everyone that's watching to watch last month at the committee, because we had a pretty earnest and heartfelt discussion. We have two things that we can't do. One is the greenhouse gas study, which is this $20,000 project, and one is the sea level rise component, which is to sort of determine what the, the adaptation impacts of sea level rise are on our community, basically, what's going to happen to the beach and the seawalls and the sandy slopes and all those things. And we had about a 45-minute discussion about what the eight of us thought with respect to sort of the value of those two projects. And it was sort of, it was a unanimous, you know, it was a great discussion, and it was the unanimous recommendation of the committee that we, that the greenhouse gas study was more important than the sea level rise study. You know, so that's, that's how the eight of us felt. I would, you know, I would say if we're just going to, you know, my preference would be, if we're just going to have a discussion about this $20,000 next month, I would ask for a little bit of forbearance, is that the right word? I would ask for a little bit of forbearance, and we just approve the $20,000 now, but I'll, but I would defer.
Jeff, I appreciate that. I just can't do that tonight, honestly. Maybe, maybe there's a good reason for it, but I don't know enough about it. You guys have had these meetings, obviously. I'd like a staff report on it, and if it's, if it makes sense, and there's something to be lost, or something significant to be gained, and it's time-sensitive, I'm there. Otherwise, I'm going to put it back with the windows, and it can wait. That's me. And I'm not trying to stall this just to delay it, and my style, as you will. Okay. So, under direction, then, we've got, we've got this report that we obviously couldn't deem received without action. We do have a resolution that we need to adopt, proposes a budget amendment. Is there a motion to go ahead and read that in, and then go ahead and make proof?
So we'll just, we'll hear the climate change thing, we'll just have a little staff report next month and talk about that.
I think we'll have more of a discussion about it, Jeff. I mean, I'm, that's my idea. I don't think the public's fully informed on it, I think we'd be looking like we're just spending $20,000 just to go ahead and get a study out. I don't know enough about it, I need to know more. Okay? And maybe we'll know more about our fiscal well-being and our physical well-being as a county. Who knows? I'd hope.
So it, it sounds like that the council is not comfortable about taking more of a deep dive, so maybe with, with other expenditures, so maybe we should put that off till April.
Exactly. This would be solely, and this is just me speaking, this would be solely in regards to going in and figuring out, $20,000 is a much easier ask in my mind, Jeff, than asking for $150,000 for a myriad of other projects, which would actually fund the FTE. We could hire somebody back for $150,000, you know, and so I want to make sure we can do that. So what we need is a motion to adopt budget and direction to staff regarding the council, excuse me. Adopt budget, budget amendments for the fiscal years 2021, 2020, 2021. That's what we need, the amendment. Brian, do you want to make sure they're clear on the motion?
It looks, looks clear to me. I'm looking at the staff report, and that was item number two on the recommendation. The first item was to receive, the second item, as you say, is to adopt the resolution, it's 2021-008.
Do you want me to make that motion, Mayor?
That'd be lovely.
Adopt, I make the motion to adopt resolution 2021-008, approving budget amendments to the fiscal year 2020, 2021.
And I'll second it, and as a second, or ask for the amendment to the maker, that it also includes a discussion and staff report on the climate report that we've discussed this evening at the next council meeting, which is in March, date specific. Chip? March 2nd? Okay. Bobby, you good with that?
Yes.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second, we've had extensive discussion, your roll call, please.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Forlito? Nice.
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Okay, that passes with five yes votes.
All right, thank you, guys, I do think that discussion was well worthwhile. So next item and the final item of the night is review and provide direction regarding the fire service RFP process.
Hey, Dave.
Yeah.
If I may, I see Carrie raising her hand, too. We were supposed to also give direction regarding the discretionary grant program for next year, and we've sort of omitted to do that, that's item number three on the, this, this status report.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jeff, I actually thought this was part of that, given the fact that this was discretionary money, so we could certainly give, we can deal with that, too. All right. So the question, I think, before us is, do we want to go ahead and deal with the discretionary grant authorization now? Or do we want to tell people, let's hold on, don't spend all your efforts? And Sharon, am I right on that?
That is correct, Mayor.
Yeah. So do we want to go ahead and put you through the drill, when we don't know if there'll be any money to distribute? Or do we want to go ahead and put your wish list together, possibly create all false expectations, and not be able to deliver? That, I think, is the question. Chip?
That's exact, that's exactly the question, Mr. Mayor.
Hate to be so candid, but I think that's it. I would prefer to wait. Karen? Karen, you're muted. You're still muted.
What, what's the, we're talking about in the discretionary grant program?
It's all of the groups that usually want to come forward and get small monies for, oh, we've had churches come forward, we've had advertising programs come forward, we've had parks problems, you know, projects come forward. I think actually, Mission Trails might have been in there at one time.
I don't think so, no. The 211 project.
But I mean, do you have an idea what we've given in the past, the amount of money that that has amounted to?
Around $20,000, I think.
You know, we've been giving free, public right-of-way away-to-restaurants, we've been giving a lot of subsidies throughout the town. These are tiny little groups that depend on very small grants just to survive. It seems to me that, you know, we ought to at least entertain the fact that we need to keep some of these arts groups alive in this town. What are we going to have left if we don't give some of these grants? Some of these groups have nothing to work with.
Mayor Potter, I would, I would agree with Councilperson Forlito.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and have, we'll go, let them go ahead and start putting together their programs, bring it forward at budget time for review.
Yes.
Okay, let's get a motion to that effect.
I'll make the motion that we provide direction to staff regarding the council discretionary grant program to move forward.
I second that, I second that.
We have two seconds. We'll let Karen second it.
I think you need to stay, Mayor, I think you need to stay with that direction is. I heard the motion was just to provide direction, but you need to stay with.
It was to open the process for the discretionary grant program.
Right.
That's what we're looking forward right now.
And not defer it till later.
I understand, I understand that, that wasn't what the motion was, so, somebody needs to state it, it's motion, perhaps Bobby, you could do that.
Yeah, Brett, can you read it back, please?
Well, I only wrote down four words, is, provide direction to staff to open the process for the council discretionary grant program.
Yes.
That is a second from Forlito. We have a motion, we have a second, we have clarity on the motion. We get a roll call, Brett, please.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Forlito?
Yes.
Tice?
Yes.
Mayor For Tim Richard?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
All right, that passes with five yes votes.
All right, excellent. Jeff, thank you for bringing that back, I thought the previous motion encapsulated it, but I appreciate it. All right, now let's move on to Resolution 2021-007. No, no, hold on a second, pardon me, review and provide direction regarding the fire services RFP process, which I tried to bring forward. to bring forward a minute ago.
Chief Tomasi will present this item, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Chief?
And I would point out that Chief Panholzer is here to answer any questions, and to show, throw his widespread support for the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Chip, for that intro. Thank you, Mayor and council. I am here today, and I'm pulling up my screen now. I'm gonna provide you an update on the RFP process, and we go over some issues and opportunities that we've uncovered, and then I will be providing you with a recommendation tonight. And then, of course, as always, we'll take direction from you, if I can get this. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Oh, good. That worked. Always the hardest part of these presentations. So tonight, I'm gonna go over, and again, what I just said, all of that, but we want to talk about some issues and opportunities with the fire services. Before I do that, I think it's important to provide our, our listeners and you with a little bit of the history of, of our services. We literally have two distinct services that are semi-interwined working out of our fire station. And I want to talk a little bit about prior to January 1st, 2012, first, and prior to that date, we had our own fire department, which consisted of Carmel employees providing fire services with our equipment. And we also had an ambulance service, which worked as a JPA, which was known as Carmel Regional Fire Ambulance, and that was in effect in 1990 and lasted until this date. And when we look at our fire services, we know we had fire service that started back in 1915 and went all the way up until January 1st, 2012. At that time, January 1st, 2012, we no longer had a fire service of our own. We contracted with Monterey to provide contractual fire services for our village. Our ambulance service, again, back in May 1990, we entered into, we've had ambulance service for several years, several decades, going back, I believe, to either the 30s or the 40s, but in May 1990, we were part of a JPA, and they provided ambulance service the same as we see now, with an ambulance responding from our fire station. But on the date of January 1st, 2012, a lot changed for the city. As I said, on January 1st, 2012, we now have fire service provided by Monterey, with Monterey employees, and the JPA dissolved officially, and we hired a handful, actually a couple, of the existing Carmel Regional Ambulance employees to work as our own ambulance service providers. They are our employees, and since they were part of the Carmel Regional Fire Ambulance, they were also firefighters. So, we hired them as firefighter paramedics, and all the employees that have come after that to work on our ambulance have been hired as paramedic firefighters. And to get them trained, they've been through the Monterey Fire Academy, so they are equipped to help out with our fire response, which they do, and in exchange, Monterey helps out with our ambulance. So, two distinct services, but they're intertwined, and that's an important concept, or an important part of this presentation, which I'll get to, and what makes an RFP process so difficult for us. So finishing with that history, going back to June of this past year, council, you approved Resolution 2020-36, which allowed the city administrator to terminate the existing fire service contract with Monterey. The reasoning behind that was specifically a lot of what we've discussed tonight with the budget. We were looking at our budget and the pandemic and the economic impact of the city. We knew we were making cuts all across the board, and the responsible thing for us to do was to look at every single department, including our fire services, and how we could save money or potentially save money. The process required us to do a 12-month notice to Monterey, per the language in the contract. That's why we brought it forward in June. This also gave us an opportunity to address what we've identified over the first eight years of this relationship. There are things that we want to change, and we'd like to see changed with the existing contract. So this was all a positive thing that we, moving forward. However, with the RFP, there are significant and major issues that impact any RFP process, but also Carmel specifically, due to its unique characteristics. And I kind of want to go over those a little bit for all of you and the public. The first one I call a hurdle, and that would be with an RFP, we would have to bring it before LAFCO. LAFCO is our county local agency formation commission. They have an opportunity to review an RFP for fire services, and, in fact, they could potentially block any RFP that we want to do for fire services if it impacts Monterey firefighters' employment. This is a state law that went through in 2015, which gives them that ability. And, as we know, if we terminate a contract with Monterey, it's been made perfectly clear that it would impact at least nine employees for Monterey. Given that we're in the middle of a pandemic, and the impacts, that, that may not be our best move. We also know through 2011, when we look back at when we initially came up with the Monterey contract, and in 2018, Pacific Grove went to RFP for fire services, that there are two suited, two suitable providers that we could possibly get. One is a state provider, and the other one is a municipal provider, which is Monterey, which we have now. There are significant differences between the two, which could pose more challenges for us. The first of those challenges would be workforce stability. We know a majority, if not all, of the Monterey employees that work for us. Monterey's been very good about their staffing, and the way they put their employees in our fire station, they last at least a year, they sign up for a year, so they understand our unique characteristics of our community, primarily the fact that we do not have addresses. So it takes a while to understand how to get places, and that continuity of personnel really helps build relationships between our two groups working together, the ambulance and the fire personnel. With the state, you're looking at a potential for thousands of employees that could be cycled in and out of our station. It's a much higher turnover. It would be equivalent to having the California Highway Patrol run your police department. They can transfer to any station throughout the state at any time, and you might get a higher turnover and not have that continuity or that familiarity with our city. Another challenge we would be facing is a financial risk. We know that Monterey's budget's very similar to Carmel's. They are a tourist-based community, and as we're seeing during this pandemic, they're suffering equally as we are with the, with the revenue coming in from the tourism. Their budget's similar to ours, so we can manage a little bit differently and have conversations with them that they would understand. With the state, they're impacted by different factors, and we'd have far less control with the contract and working with them on these budget constraints. This next one is implementation, and I wish I would have put it in bold and capitalization, because this is a big one. As I mentioned previously, our ambulance and fire departments are intertwined. The fire department currently helps us fill vacancies on the ambulance. They provide us 20 to 25 trained personnel that are paramedics that can fill vacancies, and they do quite often. We currently have a vacancy. Also, we have people going on vacation, sick, injury, and Monterey steps up and fills in when we can't fill those positions. Having a state organization come in, we don't even know if they would be willing to do this, or even able to. I don't know of any other city or county that has a state agency running an ambulance for them. That would be a big challenge. Additionally, state employees don't work the same 48-hour sets that we do, the two 24-hour shifts. That would be extremely problematic, even if they decided they could help us with filling vacancies on the ambulance, because we'd probably have to ask our employees to switch to their schedule or fill gaps in the schedule, and that would be a real challenge for us. Additionally, as I mentioned, our paramedics are trained firefighters who respond to fire calls. We would have to try to negotiate with the state to have that continue, or we would have a problem with the job description or moving forward with that. So there's a lot of issues there, and again, that one should be in capitalization, because I don't know if that's a hurdle we can get over without a significant amount of work. Lastly is governance and local control. Monterey provides a local city partner, and that's what we're looking for. We're looking for a partnership, not to be a client of somebody working under them. We want to build a partnership, and Monterey's been that partner with us. As you know, in 2012, the city council came up with performance measures for the fire department to follow. It was a five-minute or less response time 95% of the time to emergency calls. They have maintained that. We provide that report monthly to you as a council, and in fact, they don't just maintain it, they exceed it. Like our ambulance, their response time is much closer to three minutes. Having a state partnership meet those type of requirements would be quite a challenge, because we wouldn't just be working with a local chief, we'd be working with some state oversight authority, and Chip or myself would be contacting someone up in Sacramento, trying to get them to meet our requirements. That would be another big challenge. So when we look at this, I mean, RFP is still definitely a potential, but we wanted to look at, what are our attainable goals that we want to achieve overall, whether it be RFP or just contract negotiations? And the first one is potential cost reductions for services. That's why we did the resolution in June. Also, we want to look at management options with the ambulance service. Because they're intertwined, how can we improve the management of ambulance and fire? Currently, you have three different management people over our ambulance. You have myself, the county, and the fire department. We think we can improve upon that. Third is an increased public outreach on fire awareness and prevention. I think as we all learned this past summer, we are in a high-risk fire area, and we know we live in a forested community, and we're looking for our next fire department, or through contract negotiations, the fire department to get out in the community more, provide more, more outreach to the community on how they can prevent fires, and how we can actually increase our defensible space and, and provide more input to the community. So those are our three goals that we're looking for, and we think we can reach that through either an RFP with all those challenges, or, which might be easier and costless, is just a contract negotiation. So we provide you with the staff recommendation tonight, and it's to adopt, adopt Resolution 2021-009, which is, you know, authorizing the city administrator to negotiate with the city of Monterey a 12-month extension of the existing fire service contract, while a new contract is developed for fire protection with the city of Monterey for fire services. This, the reason we're doing a 12-month extension is to allow us to stay within the budget cycle. This just gives us another year, gives us about 16 months to develop language and develop a true contract, which will take us several years down the road of fire services that we are all happy with, we like, and with potential savings. Keeping in that 12-month extension also helps, would help Monterey, because it wouldn't, it would keep them from having to do a mid-year adjustment and adjustments on the contract, and it would save them a lot of time and headache as well, and we wouldn't be trying to implement anything mid-year. So like most of these presentations, we're going to give you some options to consider. Now, potential options for council to consider would be to accept the recommendation that we made tonight for allowing the extension and renegotiated, renegotiation of a new fire service contract, or deny the recommendation, ask us to continue with the RFP process for fire services, which we could do. A sub-option we want to throw in there, which staff is fully supportive of, is to include the ambulance ad hoc committee to help develop the fire service contract. I think having the public's eyes on this and input in the development of it is a critical step that'll help us develop the services that this community wants out of their fire department. It's truly their service, so they should have some, some, some input on that as well. And with that, I will leave it open to council for questions. Thank you.
Paul, thank you for that report. Are there any questions, council? Pretty self-explanatory report, Paul, but my favorite kind. All right, why don't I put it, take it out to the public? Is anybody in the public wishing to speak to this item tonight?
Yes, if I can start, this is your fire chief, Chief Panholzer. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. And first, I want to express my appreciation to the, the strong support that we've gotten from both Chip and Paul during this last period of time, and having some good conversations about where we might go and some changes we can make to our contract. And we certainly appreciate being at this juncture, and as Chip mentioned, you certainly have my support in, in moving forward with staff recommendation. In either case, I would urge you to do the 12-month extension, because if you were to continue with the RFP process now, it would be highly unlikely you could have a transition in place between now and, and the end of June, which would be necessary if we did not do an extension. So, but I'm hopeful that you will follow staff recommendation, and I am, certainly I'm bored to find ways to improve the services and, and make the contract something more like what you want and what the residents of Carmel want. So, happy to answer any questions, if you have any, but thank you for the time.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for your service. Is there anybody else? Brett, what are you thinking?
I'm thinking the same. Three people have been on the call and have not unmuted themselves.
All right, I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to council for deliberation. Councilmembers, your preference?
Well, I would, I, I would love to move forward with this staff recommendation, and I like the idea, of course, the sub-option, because I'm part of the ad hoc committee. So thanks for putting that in there, Chief.
Well, if that was a motion, Bobby, then we got a second, we could frame the discussion around the motion in a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. The motion, we have a second. The motion is to continue with the, one, your extension of the contract and use the ad hoc committee for input on ambulance service. I believe that's the motion. Carrie, you concur? Okay, is there any other discussion? Jeff, who would you hand up?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dave. I'm just, I'm reflecting on the discussion we had a couple of months ago when we talked about the ad hoc committee, and, and at that point, we, at that point, we had established the ad hoc committee to determine the parameters, and, and please, someone correct me if I'm wrong. I think we'd established the ad hoc committee to sort of determine parameters around which we would create an RFP to solicit bids, presumably from Monterey Fire and Cal Fire and anyone else that might be interested in. And I'm wondering, I'm wondering if the ad hoc committee is still the right thing to do if we're just going to negotiate with Monterey Fire, which I'm, which I, at that point, I'm happy to support. I don't, I'm wondering whether having the ad hoc committee is really the right thing to do versus sort of a traditional sort of RFP process, where it's just basically the council, the council doing the work, you know, soliciting public input, you know, all that work, I agree, has to be done. I'm just wondering whether that's the appropriate mechanism. whether that's the appropriate mechanism. That, that's all, that's all I'm thinking. And then on the, you know, I've talked to, I've talked to staff about this. I know the climate committee has, you know, we've heard a number of, had a number of presentations on sort of fire safety around the village and what we as a community need to do to keep the risk of fire down, especially when fire comes from outside the village. And so I would like, I would appreciate it regardless of which mechanism we choose, ad hoc committee or council or staff or whatever, that we have a couple of members of the committee, I think, that are interested in providing input on sort of the, the work that we've done and the things that we've heard, both from Chief Panholzer's staff and also from the AI, you know, a couple, and we had an AIA presentation about defensible space. And I think there's some, some rigor, some, some room there to improve on the city's fire, fire services and some stuff that might be worked into sort of a contract with Monterey Fire, if that's, if that's what we're going to do.
Chip, your thoughts?
My comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Barron. Those are good questions. I, I think that the ad hoc committee is the perfect vehicle. You know, over the course of the last, you know, what will be a decade, we've learned, we've learned so much about the relationship, and we've, I think both parties, Monterey Fire and the city have learned that there are opportunities for improving the relationship and improving the contract. So I, I foresee the part of the work of the ad hoc group to actually solicit the input from, from, I'll call them stakeholders, but they're really our residents and property owners. Can, you know, can we ask Chief Panholzer or one of his, his assistant chief or deputy chief to, on a quarterly basis, hold some kind of a, a public meeting on, on wildfire hazards? You know, you know, can we, you know, the, the Chief Tomasi talked about the crossover between paramedic services, and again, how can we, how can we work with Monterey Fire and our own employees on, on, on the, you know, any, any management, any additional management opportunities? Again, Chief Tomasi is a unicorn in a lot of ways, not the least of which is it's going to be hard for us to find a fire chief when he eventually retires 15 to 25 years from now, that, that is both a police chief and also has experience managing a, a paramedic, a paramedic fire service. So again, I think there's, there's just a lot of opportunities. The ad hoc committee was originally set up to look at ambulance service, and I think expanding it into looking at, at the relationship with Monterey Fire is, it's, it's really, it, it's a match made in heaven. So I, I strongly think it's, it's the right group.
Paul, did you want to add on to anything? Kind of hard to beat a match made in heaven.
And now I'm a unicorn.
I don't know if that's good or bad.
Brandon's a unicorn too, so we have two in our, in our.
All right.
I know. Yeah, I'm very supportive of this recommendation to extend the contract. I am really looking for a very robust response from Monterey Fire about fire fuel treatment, defensible space, and preparation for wildfire. I heard a lot of that out on the campaign trail. People are worried, they want to hear and see what we are going to do if that happens and how to best manage it. So I think this is an opportunity for Chief Panholzer to shine and show us, show us the plans, show us the, the projects that it would, that it might take in order to make our community a lot safer. So I, that's what I'm looking for in a fire service especially. And since we are married to paramedic in our fire team, I think that's also of paramount importance to our residents, to know that whatever we choose to do, we will have their safety at the utmost. So thank you.
All righty. Any other discussion, any other comments? Don't see any. We're good with the motion. I think we got a motion out? Then, okay, so Britt, can we call a question, please?
Okay, Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Furleto?
Yes.
Teist?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Hey, it passes with five yes votes.
All righty. Well, thank you all for the hard work tonight. Just wanted to give an opportunity for any member of the council to go ahead and add anything on a future agenda. Carrie, I think you wanted to talk about parking, maybe?
Yes, I'd like staff to, to dust off that parking report and take a look at our current situation. The second item, I think that we're kind of being pressured by the public, is taking a look at mail delivery service and street addresses.
All right, Bobby?
Yeah, I would just like to try to save the city a little bit more money. Chip, and if you could come up with some sort of a plan so that we could abandon our city phones, because a lot of times, and I have to apologize to the residents, a lot of times they call me on a, on a line, it's a second phone for me, and I don't carry a second phone often. So maybe you can look into something that could help us with that?
And I, I'd support that as long as it's at our own discretion. I don't expect unanimity across the council if I want to get rid of my phone, which I'd like to do too. How do I go ahead and do that? And can we create just some sort of clearinghouse where somebody could call into the council office and say, "Office of Mayor and Council, how can I direct your call? Can I be of assistance?" Because I get, I get so many spam calls. I get so many calls that are just pointless, and I have the same thing. It's two phones, it's difficult for me. Jeff?
Yes, thank you. I know there's another project brooding in town, the Carmel Resort Inn project, and I know it's appeared before the Forest and Beach Commission, and I think it's going to appear before the Planning Commission, and I've had a few minor conversations with, with Chip about it. And I was wondering maybe if I could ask you to prepare, you know, I know Chip prepared a memo for about the parklets, and I was wondering if I could ask, just sort of off the cuff, ask Chip to prepare some sort of equivalent memo about what's going on with the Carmel Resort, Carmel, is that the Carmel Resort Inn project up on Carpenter in Guadalupe? I don't know, I don't think we need a particular agenda item to, to do that, but I would, I think it would behoove all of us to sort of know what's going on up there.
Yes, sir, will do. Work with Mr. Pyric and Mr. Swanson. Yes, sir.
Anything else? Karen?
Yes, I just want to echo what Carrie said about the mail delivery. I thought Tony Seaton wrote us a very, very thoughtful letter outlining a lot of the issues that I've heard. So I didn't know whether you saw me doing this, but it, the, the time has come to find out some things about addresses and delivery and mailboxes, the whole nine yards. I think it's time to, I know it's controversial, I know it's not going to be an easy discussion, but I think it's, it's one that we need to have very soon.
All righty, sounds like you've been tasked enough, Chip. Are you clear on the direction? Nothing more than, that's it for tonight. All right, guys, thanks a lot. I really appreciate the discussion. Very professional, very well done, very courteous. Thank the public for their, my minimal input during the action items, but public comment's always entertaining, so I appreciate that too. Thanks, guys. Take care.